All right. Good afternoon, everybody. See what we do first, Pledge of Allegiance? Jackie says we have to do the Pledge of Allegiance, so maybe Jason Lass could lead us in that. Okay, at this time, open session is convened. We've had a pledge. We're doing good. Individuals wishing to address the City Council are requested to complete a speaker card. They're located in the back, or you can talk to the lovely Sylvia at the front. Please observe a three-minute limit for communications, and once called upon to speak, please state your name and city of residence for the record. And then, oh, I guess we're starting off with communications from the public. Sylvia, got anything?
Mayor, yes, I have one speaker card for communication from the public.
Okay. All right, it's gonna be Bobby David Tag team.
City Council, nice seeing you and talking to you again. My name's Aven Brownbilla, I forgot my last name there, and I am a resident of Corona. I'm here to promote actually three events in May. I've been very busy. The first event, we have Cinco de Mayo event is happening May 4th. And to recap, Cinco de Mayo is an event that, well, community event, and at the end of the day, all the net proceeds are going to graduating seniors of the Corona Norcreanified School District. Second event, the Joe Dominguez post 742 is having their 76th anniversary on Saturday, May 11th. If the community and council can save that date, we'd love to have as many people there as possible. And lastly, I'm here to also promote the Memorial Mile March. The Memorial Mile March is a march that happens every year, and we're here to honor our fallen. Memorial Day is a day, is a somber day. It's not a day where you tell veterans Happy Memorial Day. So know that whenever you see a veteran, you know, don't tell them Happy Memorial Day, maybe thank you for your service, but the Memorial Mile March is happening. It's coming from, it's gonna start at the Chamber, and then we're gonna go around the Backstreet East Grand and into the Civic Center. The date on that?
May 25th.
It's Saturday, May 25th. So three events in May. Hopefully, we can get the community out there. Let's honor our fallen brothers and sisters, our veterans, and the community for Cinco de Mayo. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Hey, David, are you squared away with the city as far as insurance and all that for Cinco de Mayo?
We're working on it.
Working on it?
It's, yeah, it's something that we're working on, and we'll make sure we get squared away.
Okay, cool.
Mr. Brownbilla, really quick, Joe Dominguez 76, is that an evening event?
It's an evening event, yes, at 5:00 to 8:00 p.m.
Thank you.
So that means you can go to the vintage home tour first, Tony, and then go.
Last year, he cooked for Veterans Day. Maybe we can get you to cook again, Didaria.
Good afternoon. Bobby Spiegel, President and CEO for the Corona Chamber of Commerce. Just wanted to promote the next slide, if you would. The Taste of Corona, which will be Saturday, June 26th, up at Dos Lagos. It's gonna be a fun family activity. We're looking for eateries from the area. We're very, very excited to bring this back. It was something that was done originally by two great organizations, the police organization and the fire, through their nonprofits, and they stopped doing it a few years back, and so the Chamber chose to go ahead and start that up again Saturday, June 22nd. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Bobby. Thank you, David. Sylvia, are there any more speaker cards?
Mayor, we do not have any more speaker cards.
Okay, with that, we'll go into agenda items. Number one, it's a report, Proposed Operations Plan for City Park. Donna Finch is gonna take it over.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the City Council. I am very happy to be here today to present to you the much anticipated operations plan for City Park. I know we have a full agenda today and a lot of information to cover, so I will try to go through this as quickly and carefully as possible. Please feel free to ask any questions along the way. I'd be happy to answer them. So our ask today is that the City Council provide feedback on the proposed operations plan for City Park. And before I get into the presentation, I just want to give you a quick overview and summary of the items that I'm going to be presenting. We're gonna be touching on an overview of our current recreation programming at all of our facilities and the focus in the operations of the Circle City Center specifically. We'll also be talking about our proposed future programming plan for the new City Park facility, and then wrap it up with a summary of our revenue and expenditure projections for the operations of City Park and how that compares to the current budget for the CCC. So just a quick update on the purpose of the City Park Revitalization Project. I know you're familiar with all of these items already, but as you know, the revitalization of City Park is a goal in our strategic plan. The specific language in there is to redevelop City Park, including the development of a new full-service, purpose-built community center. We also noted in our Park and Recreation Master Plan that there are some findings, that our current facilities are not built for comprehensive recreation programming use. There's a recommendation to increase efficiency of our programming through coordinated programming at a centralized location, which is what the new City Park Facility will help us do. And then lastly, our Downtown Revitalization Plan identifies the revitalization of City Park as a key project. City Park is listed as an anchor to the downtown Corona area, and it is a catalyst project identified for the revitalization of the downtown area. So our current programs and operations, right now, we offer programming at several locations. Circle City Center is where we have the majority of our programming. About 45% of our programs are operated out of the Circle City Center, which is also known as the CCC. We have a variety of programs operated there, including our early childhood programs, special interests, adaptive sports, and rentals. Next, we have our Senior Center, which we operate currently about 3% of our programs. Even though that facility is very active, it's actually full with programming. The amount of space that we have there really doesn't allow us to do much, but it is 3% of our programming, and majority of our senior programs are run out of there, including senior nutrition, bingo, and billiards. Next, we have our Historic Civic Center, or the HCC, where we operate about 6% of our programs, which include theater rentals, kids camp, and sports programs. And that is run out of the theater, the community room, the gym, and the Vicentia Activity Center, or the VAC. Next, we have our Victoria Park Building, which is just a very small percentage, about 1% of programming. That's located at Victoria Park Campus, and we do tai chi and folklorico dancing out of that site. Next, we have Brentwood Park. The building over there is about 2% of our programs, and that's primarily early childhood. And then we have our private business partner sites, where we operate 17% of our programs. So these are programs that are operated and run by a private operator, but we do promote them through our seasonal newsletter. We promote those as city programs, and they're located all throughout the city at locations such as All-American Karate, Gymnastics Pacifica, and YMCA. And then lastly, our parks, we run about 26% of our programs out of there, and those are primarily sports programs. This next slide just has the same information, talks about all the different types of programs we offer, and provides some photos and illustrations just to provide a better representation of the different programming types. So this slide right here just shows a summary of all of the programs that we offered in 2023. The columns in the table break down programs by type and the number of activities offered, the number of sessions per activity, and the total number of activity days. And to provide an example of what each of those breakdowns mean, we included a program on the right-hand side of the slide, which is Musical Munchkins. So that is one activity within our early childhood programming category. And for Musical Munchkins, we had nine sessions during this particular season, which accounted for 72 days of that Musical Munchkins program. So that just gives a kind of an idea, an overall idea of how each of these numbers are calculated. For 2023, we had a total of 328 activities offered, which amounted to 1,234 sessions and 12,596 total activity days.
Ms. Finch, the contract instructors that we have listed on here, these are all like Corona businesses, right? These are folks that we're working with that are here in the community? Or any of them located outside of Corona?
We do have some that are located in the city of Riverside, I believe. That's the ice hockey, if I remember correctly. Yeah, Icedown.
Yeah, so the contract instructors, they can be businesses, they can be hobbyists or enthusiasts, individuals passionate about certain subjects, and they apply through the city to teach their area of expertise. And then we work with them in partnership to enhance how many offerings of classes we can do. So that saves us having to train staff or go into niche subjects.
Wonderful. Thank you.
And as you can see, the majority of our programs are offered by contract instructors. That's about 83% of our programming type. We do do a lot of those programs at our facilities as well. Actually, majority of our contract classes are operated at our facilities, but as mentioned, we do have some partner sites, both within Corona and a very small amount outside of the city. And then 17% are led by in-house staff. And this is a very popular programming model. A lot of recreation agencies use this. As Mr. Lass mentioned, it allows us to tap into that level of expertise to provide more specialized programming without having to go and hire new staff for every program type. This next slide shows our program participation rates in 2023. And again, this breaks this down by different program types and program categories. So in 2023, we had a total of 29,946 program participants, which amounted to about 61% of our total program capacity. We did wanna highlight special events, even though that is not necessarily a program. It is an activity that we do offer that generates additional participation. We had about 56,100 participants in special events. And with those two combined totals, that gave us 86,046 participants overall through 2023.
Sorry, does program capacity, just to go back real quick, there's two things, the adaptive and the senior, that means that of those two programs, like folks are signing up for them, and they're filling up, and there's more demand for them?
Correct. Those are both very popular program types. Okay, so one of the things that had been noted in our Park and Rec Master Plan is that we do have some challenges with our program participation. We, as mentioned in the previous slide, are about 61% of our capacity right now. I did wanna touch on some of the reasons for those challenges. Several of them have to do just with the fact that we, up until recently, primarily operated the CCC as a reservation facility. We had a lot of that space reserved for reservations. When we first acquired the building, rooms were intentionally left unprogrammed, so if reservations did come up, we wanted to make sure we had that availability. So over the last five to seven years, we've started to transition more into a programming model. We've hired staff that has been dedicated to building up those programs. It is taking time. We are trying to build more awareness, but it's something that we're gradually working towards, and we've been seeing increases in our program participation rates over the last few years just for the fact that we are starting to build that up more. And it's something that will continue to grow as we work towards opening the new City Park Facility. We've also mentioned before that these rooms are not designed, and these facilities are not designed specifically for recreation use. In the CCC in particular, we have a lot of issues with acoustics. When you have programs going on, let's say, up in the dance room on the second floor, and a banquet going on down in the room below, you can hear a lot of the movement stomping. So there's just not really the proper design for these types of programs to operate simultaneously, and that has been a challenge for us in the past with this building. A lot of our sites are difficult to access. We don't have sufficient parking at some of our locations, so that has been a challenge as well. We mentioned, too, that the facilities are not designed for programming use, so we do have a lack of vibrancy. A lot of these sites are single-use sites, so people just go there for one purpose, to take their class. There's not a lot of complementary activities happening in the surrounding areas to make the space more vibrant, so that's been a challenge as well. And then the last one I wanna note is not specific to something that City Park will solve, but it is a challenge with program participation, and that's insufficient marketing. It's something that we are working on with the new budget cycle. We've requested additional funds to market our programs better. So that's a process that we're gonna be undertaking as we start to plan for the opening of building our programs and then marketing them better, so we're ready to go once City Park opens.
Okay, before we move on, really quick, I just have a couple of questions. And thank you for the time that we spent going over this, and you answered a lot of my questions. I do have some, you know, clarifications. When we talk about difficult to access, are we talking about basically the Senior Center?
The Senior Center is one. The CCC has, we've had comments about that being difficult to access as well with the traffic in the area, the fact that the parking is not sufficient. We share that parking lot with the adjacent properties, so if you go sometimes in the middle of a weekday, the parking lot is full because a lot of those surrounding uses have other activities going on. So that's been a challenge for that site.
Okay, yeah, I guess I haven't been down there enough during the middle of the day, but I've never seen the parking lot even, like totally full, even when there was, I think, the fullest, I think I saw it, was there was Barbers and Backpacks event, where they were taking up probably 50 spaces, and there were still places to park. So that one, I'm a little bit, you know, I'm not quite sure about. The lack of awareness part, I 100% agree. The programs, I know that 61% of our programs were 61% of the time, and I think in the later slide, you're gonna talk about a gap and how you fill that. I'm just curious about what we think is gonna change. Because if we're only filling up 61%, and before it was 30, now it's 60, and I understand the math and how we got to 60%, and it's not just marketing. I don't know if, you know, the CCC is seen as a nice space. It's nicely done. Vibrancy, that's on us, not on, you know, the building is fine. I don't see any issues with the building. The lack of energy is probably more programming and how we use the building and how we do those things, but I don't know how, what's gonna change, what's gonna be different that's gonna, you know, fill up a space that's, you know, a third larger.
Yeah, so I'm gonna talk a little bit more about the programming plan in the later slides, and I'll be able to touch on that further in the presentation.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so I'm gonna dive in a little bit more to the CCC, because this, again, is the area that we are proposing to relocate those programs to City Park, and we wanna make sure we're being able to provide a proper comparison of what we're currently offering now and how that will change as we shift to the new City Park Facility. So just a quick overview of Circle City Center. It is open right now, Monday through Saturday. We do have full programming hours Monday through Thursday with modified schedules on Friday and Saturday. And then on Sunday, it is closed for programming, but we do have it open for reservations. Current staffing right now, we have five full-time staff dedicated to the CCC operations and program. We have about a dozen or so part-time staff that provide program and customer support and help with setup and teardown of equipment. And then multiple contract instructors, as mentioned in the previous slide. So just some of our use trends right now for the CCC. For, most of our programs are run out of there Monday through Friday. In the mornings and early afternoons, we primarily operate early childhood programs, some senior programming, and our adaptive programs. And then as we start to get into the late afternoon, early evening, we see some of the school-age children come in for sports programming. We offer more special interest classes, adult classes as well. So, and then our reservations is an area where we start to see more activity in the evenings as well. And then, as mentioned, on Sundays, we have reservations only. This chart right here, I think, is a really good illustration of our programming use trends throughout the day. So the orange bar on the chart before you shows our programs. As you can see, in the morning, we have a kind of an uptick in programs. As soon as we open up, we get a lot of our activity with our seniors, our adaptive, our early childhood. And then in the afternoon, we see a little bit of a lull. And then in the evening, it starts to pick up again with the different program types that we mentioned, or that I mentioned in the previous slide. Our challenge with City Park is that afternoon gap. That's the one that we are really gonna be working towards trying to close, and you'll see later on in the presentation how we hope to be able to do that. And then with the reservations, that's the green bar there, we really do not see reservations start to occur until kind of the early afternoon, and then into the evening is where we see an uptick in our reservations. So for the CCC, we wanted to provide an overview of our fiscal year '24 program and operations budget. As you can see here, for the CCC alone, we have just over 1.5 million in expenditures for fiscal year '24 projected. And then when you factor in the cost to currently operate City Park, that brings that up to a combined total of roughly 1.65 million. And then for our revenues that are projected for the fiscal year for all of our youth, adult sports, city, and contract-led classes and reservations, we are projecting about $777,500 in total revenue. So this equates to a current city subsidy of roughly $870,000, which is 52% of the overall expenditure budget. And then I'm gonna come back to these numbers later on in the presentation when I give a comparison of what we're projecting for City Park. Okay, so this next group of slides talks about our future City Park programming plan. And as you know, we started a master planning process for City Park in June of 2022. It was about an 18-month process that was heavily influenced by community engagement. We went out to the neighboring community, as well as the entire city of Corona, to really try and get their, an understanding of what the city would like to see at City Park. Through this effort, we received about 2,100 survey responses, and this helped shape what we are proposing for the new City Park Facility. And as you know, the council adopted the master plan on July 19th of 2023. So through all of our engagement for City Park, we found that the amenities that the residents most wanted to see, including walking trails, playgrounds, picnic shelters or pavilions, gardens, and landscaping areas, space for events and music festivals, a new community center, a splash pad, and an aquatic center.
Ms. Finch?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Can you go back to that slide really quick?
Sure.
One of the things that we talked about a lot was the, if you draw like, if you put a pin in City Park and you draw a circle around, and you have, you know, zero to one miles, or, you know, one to five, or whatever it was, how does that work into this list where people that are right around that park? Do you have this broken out separately by those different? right around that park? Do you have, do you have this broken out separately by, by those different categories and how, how far they are from the park?
Those are presented in the City Park Master Plan, but largely those all lined up, the first 12 top, the top 12 amenities were almost all the same, just based on slight, slight percentage differences, but pretty much they lined up just like this.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next slide right here talks about our programming, and we did a separate survey through our Park and Rec Master Plan to identify the types of programs that the community wanted to see throughout the city of Corona. So through this survey, the programs that scored the highest are cooking classes, arts and crafts, outdoor activities, life skill classes, wellness activities, and gym and fitness center amenities. Oops, sorry. Several of these programs can be provided through the City Park Plan that we proposed. Those are highlighted in orange, and then the blue highlight shows the programs that we could offer at the Historic Civic Center, which is designated as our Center for Performing Arts. So as mentioned, the solution that we have identified for all, to meet all of the needs identified in the City Park Master Plan, as well as the Park and Recreation Master Plan for both amenities and programs, are, is City Park. At City Park, we are going to be proposing a new purpose-built, multi-generational community center where we can provide programs for all generations and different cultural groups. In addition, we're proposing a new gym and swim facility with a workout room, a dance studio for fitness classes, a gymnasium that will be striped for basketball, volleyball and pickleball, and a new aquatic center with a recreation pool and competition pool. We're also proposing a community canvas and Market Plaza with ample space for large-scale events. And of course, there will be passive park space areas for leisurely activities with walking loops, playgrounds and sports courts. So at the new part, City Park, there will be something for everyone. As mentioned, we have a variety of spaces that will meet all of our resident programming needs, and this slide just shows kind of a snapshot of the different, the various different types of programs that we can offer. As mentioned, the Aquatic Center will provide programming such as Learn to Swim, Lap Swim, Recreation Swim, and various types of aquatic fitness classes. We'll have rental space for banquets, meetings and conferences, classroom and creative space, event space, fitness and sports areas, and outdoor and play spaces.
Finch, really quick, can you go back to that slide?
Sure.
The aquatic center, one thing I didn't hear was athletic use for the pool. Is that, is that part of it as well? Swim teams, water polo teams, that type of stuff?
Correct, yes. So we put together a programming plan, and I'll, I'll forward to the next slide to show you, that provided kind of a sample allocation of the different types of uses we can have in each space. So for the Aquatic Center specifically, we anticipate probably the afternoon and evening hours to be set aside for more, more of those competitive swim-type of activities. We would make it available for swim groups if they want to rent it for competition space for practicing, and it'll also be available on the weekends for actual swim tournaments to be held there.
Does that also include water polo?
Water polo can be offered as well, yes.
I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
You're welcome.
No, but I, I, I don't know anything, obviously, I don't know anything about water polo and/or swimming, but I didn't know if there was a difference in like the pool, if they, if they needed to have a, if the pool was a different size for water polo or anything along those lines. I'd be more of the competition cannonball team.
Okay, so we tried, as I mentioned, we tried to provide kind of an example of what a daily programming schedule could look like for City Park. We are preparing to have this facility fully programmed in all the spaces during the operating hours while also allocating time for passive and drop-in use in certain areas that are designed for this, such as the game room, the, the community canvas and the walking loop. The sample daily schedule on this slide right here is broken down by room and space, and the legend shows the different programming types that are color-coded for different groups, including early childhood, sports and fitness, youth, adult, senior, adaptive and special interest. As you can see with the variety of colors, there is something for all ages and all groups at all hours of the day. An example could be a senior could come in in the morning for fitness programs, and then they can go and take a classroom and afterward hang out in the game room during the afternoon hours. A mother could also bring her child to a tiny tots class and then head over to the fitness space to get a workout, or take a walk around the walking loop while she's waiting for her child's class to end. So that's one of the things that we are really excited about is with all of the different use types, there are a lot of complementary uses and activities that could occur for different groups to participate in.
Just had a quick question before we change. On the lab one, in the middle of the day, you have the wiggles and judo and tumblers into the classroom. The flooring, is the flooring going to change? Are you going to have different flooring in that room? Because I don't know, maybe the, maybe Mr. Dario can tell us that doing judo or rolling around on a hard floor is probably not what you want to do, right?
Opposite of a good time.
There you go.
We haven't selected the flooring yet for the rooms. We do, we will, we do plan to have mats available as well for different types of uses. So that's why the, we're, we're, we're creating kind of the clean classroom space and then the messy space for those types of activities, crafts, more active activities.
Yeah, I was just, and that kind of goes my further comment about the fact, my, my wife runs a, a similar, she owns, it's a gym and, and a, you know, 160-room banquet facility and another probably 150 or 200 room, and she has three porters on, on deck all, all day long because of, they're picking up trash, they're changing rooms out, they're moving things, and, you know, we have a half a person. I know that's a little later on, but I'm just kind of noticing that, that too, and I'm thinking to myself, who's going to roll out flooring and then take the flooring out? And, and all, the other part of that is, of those three people that she's had for the last three years, a third of them that were there for a long time, they left on medical leaves because they overworked, couldn't lift things, you know, had issues. So I'm just, you know, trying to...
Ellie took the tiny tumblers, and the person who did it, it was one person, she just rolled out the mats. Like, we would show up a little bit early and she would just roll out the mats and set them up, so the kids tumbled and it was safe.
Okay, great.
Took them all of like less than 10 minutes. So Ellie would get a few minutes extra to tumble around. But I did have a question. All of these classes and this programming schedule, these are real classes that we offer currently. So this is not like a hypothetical what we could have. This is what we currently have and how it would fit into programming in a new space.
Correct, with the exception of aquatic, because we don't have the aquatic program anymore, but these are programs that we had offered in the past through our aquatics.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so this slide, unfortunately, I lost my animation. I had some really cool animation to kind of follow along. I'm not sure what happened to it, but this shows an example of what a day at City Park could look like. Again, we are really planning for this to be a lifestyle center, not, not where somebody just goes and takes one class, but somewhere that someone can come and choose to spend the day there if they'd like to. So an example of what a day at City Park could look like could start at 7:00 AM with a workout at the community gym. Then at 8 o'clock, we, they could go play pickleball in the gymnasium or play a game of basketball. 9 o'clock, they could go swim laps in the pool. 10 o'clock, head over to the game room to play a game of ping pong. 11 o'clock, take a class on financial planning in the classroom space. 12 o'clock, go over to the Market Plaza and have lunch with their friends, utilizing one of the, the food trucks that we plan to invite to that space. Then at 2 o'clock, they could go over to the lobby, just relax a little, catch up on emails. 3 o'clock, head over to the community canvas, relax and read a book. 4 o'clock, go back to the classroom space, take a scrapbooking class. 5 o'clock, head over to the outdoor basketball courts, play a few games with family and friends, and then wrap up the day at 7 o'clock by taking an evening stroll through the walking loop. So we just thought this was a really good example of what somebody could do if they wanted to come to City Park and spend the entire day there.
Ms. Finch, this Market Plaza with the food trucks, do we, are, are we planning on having like some specialized, like process for food trucks to participate? Like, are we going to try and facilitate to incentivize, incentivize food trucks to be in this Market Plaza?
So we really want to streamline the process where we can make it easy for food trucks to come, set up, kind of eliminate the red tape and make this somewhere that if we, you know, five days out of the week, during the week, if we want to do an afternoon food truck gathering where people can actually come to City Park and choose from different vendors to have lunch, that's something that would be made available for them.
Okay. Because I know that sometimes that can, that can be the difficulty, like food trucks want to participate in things, but then they've got to provide all these sorts of, and then go to different places to get them. So just like we're doing streamlining for our rentals, I would love to see that process for food trucks.
And I, I can comment a little bit to that, too. We've been doing a lot more active engagement since we've activated the night market experience, so we're working hand-in-hand with the county. We know who has health permits. We also have business licenses placed. Also, through the Ready to Serve list, we have pre-approved vendors that are friendly with us. Those are good for any event. It's making it much more easy to tap in, but the, the cool thing about this amenity is it's going to be pre-staged to accommodate these types of uses, where in the past, we had to really try to figure out how to work these elements into our events to meet the increasing demand.
Are you saying, did I hear you say we can get vendors to be pre-approved with the city?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we actually have several on our list that are available for the website now.
That's something that I'd love for us to partner with the Chamber on, so the Chamber knows to tell businesses how to get on that pre-approval list, so that we can really streamline, streamline that participation. Thank you.
All right, so in order to provide this level of programming, additional staff will be needed. This chart right here shows a, a breakdown of our anticipated staff needs to operate the new City Park facility. The positions in black are existing positions, and the positions in orange are new positions. For all of our programming needs, we already have most of these positions currently in existence through our department. We will just be moving to allocate more of their time towards City Park, because we will be providing more of our programs at City Park. So an example is our, our senior coordinators, our program coordinator for seniors. Right now, majority of our senior programs are operated out of the Senior Center, but as we, as we start to expand that space over there and build the new community center, we'll be able to move more of our senior programming over there. So we'll be allocating more of our senior staff to that facility. The fitness instructor is a new position, which we are proposing as a part-time contract position that will be used to operate and run all of our, our fitness classes that are over in the wellness area. For aquatics, we would need, of course, a whole new staff team for this because we do not currently operate an aquatic program, so we are proposing a new program coordinator, full-time, an assistant rec coordinator, part-time, and then part-time pool supervisors, water safety instructors and lifeguards that would be 100% allocated to City Park. And then for our building staff, we have an existing office assistant that would transfer over to provide that front counter and admin support. We also have several community services leaders and senior community services leaders that would be working at City Park to provide not only the customer service support, but also assisting with some of that setup and take-down within the different classroom spaces. We also are proposing two maintenance positions to help with keeping that facility in tip-top shape. It's going to be very heavily programmed. We want to make sure it stays in pristine condition, so we are proposing a new lead maintenance technician as well as a facility maintenance assistant. Okay, so this last section talks about our City Park revenue and expenditure projections. So through our Park and Recreation Master Plan process, we included a cost recovery model that provides guidance for program recovery levels on a continuum, continuum of 0 to 120% cost recovery. Programs with greater common goods such as our parks, wellness programs, community events, these are intended to be more heavily subsidized because they provide a greater good to the overall community. And then as we start to move further up the scale on that arrow, programs that get into more of an individualized benefit such as skill-building activities, workshops and facility reservations, those start to have less and less of a subsidy, all the way up to reservations where we are projecting to recover up to 120% of cost recovery. So in order to help achieve our cost recovery goals that are recommended in the Park and Recreation Master Plan, we are proposing a new hybrid revenue model, and this includes various options for participating in our programs. The first one in the column on the left is the membership fee option, and this would provide a, a monthly membership for unlimited access to our fitness amenities, including the workout room, the fitness classes, the gymnasium and the aquatic center. We would also continue to offer our traditional user fee, which is kind of like the pay-to-play model. So for anyone that's coming in to use a specific activity, they would pay individually for that activity, and that would include a day pass for drop-in use of the fitness amenities. So the amenities that are offered through the fitness membership would be available for day pass use. We also will continue to offer our seasonal program registration for our sports programs for both youth and adults, our programs and contract classes, including early childhood, youth, adult and special interest, as well as our youth camps. And then we would have private reservation opportunities available for our banquet room, our conference room, classrooms, game room, gymnasium, sports courts, our pool and our community canvas. And then for our passive use areas, we would continue to offer free use of, of passive amenities. For City Park, we're proposing the game room to continue to be a free passive use area, as well as the playground, the community canvas, splash pad, sports courts, walking loop and pump track.
Sorry, really quick, before you, can you go back? I don't see picnic areas, so the picnic areas that are out there, I see all the picnic tables. Those are going to be free?
So those will operate under the reservation model as well. I apologize, I left that out, but current, it, it would be the same that we offer with our other park spaces, where they would be available for rental space.
Okay, so the folks that live around there, they're going to have to reserve, reserve a picnic space to use it?
If they choose to.
Got it, thanks.
So the current model, if it's not in use and no one's using it, you can just use it. And if you want to make it reserved, like if you have like a, a kid's birthday party like I did and I didn't reserve a picnic shelter, then you run the risk of it being used or getting reserved by someone else. But if it's not often reserved, you can just, you can just use it for free. But you run the risk. You can use it for free, but someone can reserve it.
Correct, it is reservable space. Our policy right now states that if you have a group of, I believe it's nine people or more, it needs to be reserved, and we are streamlined, streamlining that reservation process by doing on-demand reservations, where you can just scan a QR code, check availability and make a reservation. And a lot of those additional fees that were added for insurance, most of those are now being included or waived and streamlined into a, a much more easier process.
Okay, thank you.
So for our membership model, in order to try and identify what the appropriate price point is for our membership, we look at a variety of different agencies, including cities, nonprofits and private uses. So for cities, membership model is still something that's currently evolving right now within California. We did see a lot of cities outside of California that are offering it, so we, we looked at some of those rates, but we saw rates ranging anywhere from $22 a month to $82 a month for individual memberships, and $44 a month to $112 a month for family memberships. The cities that have a double asterisk next to it do not have a aquatic facility included in that membership, so their price reflects that, but all of the other ones do have aquatic amenities provided for that. And then for the nonprofit membership model, this is a little bit more common, especially with the YMCA. It's a model that they use pretty frequently, and we see the range anywhere from $45 to $57 a month. For the three YMCA's that we identified there, the ones surrounding us that have membership models for Redlands, Fullerton and Whittier, and then for family memberships, we saw it range from $72 to $99 a month. And for private facilities, which we feel will be our biggest competitors, because those are the ones that are located here in Corona, we have Choose Fitness, 24-Hour Fitness and LA Fitness. Those memberships range from $27 to $59 a month for an individual membership. They do not offer a family model membership, and a lot of these don't include, include a full aquatic center with the same level of amenities that we are proposing. So for Corona, based on all of this, our, our recommendation is that the membership model be offered at $30 for an individual, $20 for a senior, or $55 for a family. And for a family, that would include two adults and up to four children. And then, as mentioned in the previous slide, we will offer the, the day pass for drop-in use, and we are proposing that right now at $8 for an adult, $6 for senior, $4 for youth and $15 for a family. And with the level of amenities that are being proposed for, to be offered under the membership, we feel that this is still a pretty reasonable price point and still provides a very good value.
Donna, real quick, can you just explain a little bit more if a lower-income family doesn't have $55 a month, we're not even talking about using the pool either, what kind of subsidies are available, if any?
So one of the things that we are going to be pursuing are different grant opportunities. So an example for seniors would be like the Silver Sneakers Model. That, that's something that's offered through healthcare agencies where they can waive the fee for, or at least provide a subsidy to help us be able to provide that without having to charge the senior for those wellness amenities. We'll continue to look for other opportunities as well for families, but that's, that's something that, you know, we, we will, we will definitely look at.
Yeah, I think we definitely have to look at that more, because, you know, this is the lower income area, and it's kind of their park, so I want to make sure that they can use it to the fullest. So I want to make sure that they can use it to the fullest.
What was the, when, do you know, when we had the pool, what was the day pass for folks to use the pool?
It was just a couple dollars for the day. I believe it was about $2 for lap or rec drop-in swim. And then we also had the multi-pack combos there.
It was $2, like regardless of adults, kids, family, it's $2 per person?
Okay, so based off of the, all of the different areas that we talked about, including memberships, drop-in, rentals, programs, we are estimating just over $2 million, so $2,389,000 in annual revenue for this site. And this is based on a few assumptions. So for the membership revenues, we are basing it on 1,000 memberships at 500 individual memberships, 250 senior memberships, and 250 family memberships, which estimates about $405,000 annually in revenue. And then for the drop-in activities, we base this off of a very conservative estimate of five to 10 passes per day, assuming that most of the people that would be using these amenities would have the membership. And this estimates just over $147,000 in revenue. Then for rentals, which we anticipate to be our biggest revenue generator, we are basing these numbers off of a six-hour daily average for the banquet room, the courtyard, and the conference room, which are our primary rentals. And then for the weekends, we will be making the other spaces available for rent. And our estimates here are just over $998,000 in revenue. And then for programs, lastly, we are basing this on an average program participation rate of 75% of our program participants. So we are pretty confident that as we start to build our programming and we have compatible uses going on at the site, we have a new community center, that we can get those numbers up to 75%. So that's where we're basing these revenues off of. And that would put us in at $837,000 annually for program revenue, which gives us the grand total here on this slide.
Just really quick question. How do we determine that there's 1,000 people that need gym memberships? And how do we assume that there's, I mean, there's a lot of, I mean, I know we're being conservative, but what are we basing it on? Just feeling, or is there backup to that?
So we're basing it off of our current participation rates for our wellness programs. So I'm trying to flip back to that slide right here.
We currently don't have a gym, so.
Don't have a gym, but for our sports programs, for example, we had, just for sports programs in general, we had just over 1,200 participants. And then for all of our programs altogether, we had 29,000 participants. So we feel that just with that level of participation, getting to 1,000 memberships is something that is achievable for us.
I think they're going to go well above 1,000.
So the assumption is that these people either don't have memberships now, or they're going to be transferring from somewhere else?
The value of what we're offering for the price point will be an incentive to get them, if they have a membership somewhere else, to switch that membership to City Park. Because it's not just going to be a fitness center. It's going to be fitness, it's going to be exercise classes, it's going to be a full aquatic center with a recreation pool and a lap swim pool. So the amount of amenities that we are offering are going to far exceed what you would see at a private gym.
And then the rentals, what is that, the banquet? I mean, I know it's always been discussed that there's this need. Where does that come from? How do we know that that's going to be that many, that much usage? Because that's a big number. That's almost half of the number that we're generating. And we currently only offer a fraction of that?
So we did some outreach to other cities. One city in particular is the city of Diamond Bar. They have a very large-scale banquet facility with classroom spaces that are available for rent. And for just the banquet space and the classroom space, they generate over $800,000 a year in annual revenue. We also will have our aquatic area available for rent. We'll have the community canvas, we'll have a gymnasium. So we feel with those added amenities, we can reach those numbers.
Yeah, you pointed out that location before, and I actually drove out and looked at it. It's in a gorgeous area. It's beautiful location, it's, you know, surrounded by a beautiful neighborhood. I could see why they, and they have a great view. And it's a beautiful drive up there. So yeah, I get why that's generating $800,000 worth. Thank you.
Donna, real quick, just to confirm, that $55 for a family of six, I think it was, that does include the aquatic center as well as all the other amenities, right?
It does, yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Ms. Fitch, for the membership, so those 29,000 current participants are paying to participate? I mean, not all 29,000 are paying to participate? Okay.
Majority of our programs are fee-based. We do have some free programming with seniors and adaptive, but majority of our programs, our contract classes are fee-based programs.
That's what I thought. So like, for instance, if you wanted to take like a yoga class, right? Like, you're paying whatever amount of money to do that yoga class for three to four weeks.
That's correct.
So you're paying for those classes. If you do the membership, do you include those? So that I wouldn't have to do a separate registration for those classes?
That's correct. So all the fitness and wellness classes would be part of the fitness and aquatic membership?
So how are we going to pay for the contract folks?
So that's why we're proposing, if you go back to that programming, I'm sorry, the staffing slide, we have the, there it is. Under the programming block, the very last position is fitness instructors, part-time. So we are proposing to hire the fitness instructor as part-time staff and then schedule them during those blocks of times where we would offer the fitness class. And then with that membership or paying for the drop-in use fee, that class would be available for them to participate in. So that wouldn't be a contract model class, that would be a part-time contract employee.
So a part-time person is going to teach yoga and dance and all the other fitness classes that we have in a part-time position?
We would hire multiple instructors and then just pay them for the amount of time that they're teaching those classes.
Okay.
I can comment a little bit on that, too. It's a different way of programming for us, right? So with the contract class model, the instructors propose to us what time they would like to teach, what type of subject, and then we kind of review and approve. So running a gym facility, this kind of changes a little bit, where we would actually be looking at a schedule and what activities we want to offer. And then we can bring in that specialized talent and then do blocks. So maybe that Pilates instructor does a beginning, intermediate, they have a, you know, two, three-hour block. And then we can cycle through to different instructors and have those specialized certified individuals come through.
So I just wanted to incentivize someone like me, who will go and sign up for a yoga den class, which is through our rec program. If I were to get a membership, rather than to sign up for that contract class and yoga is being offered at the new recreation center, it would be like, I just pay a little bit more, and now I have access to all these other things on top of yoga. But would we work with yoga den to try and be that part-time instructor?
Well, I think what we want to be careful, too, is not to compete with existing businesses. So if you sign up for a recreation yoga den class, it's often at a different rate or at a time that might not be during their popular use schedule. So we don't want to impact their operations. We're trying to enhance and drive business, and at the same time, continue to provide those recreation experiences.
I'm just trying to get like a real-life example that incentivizes someone from the community to pay a little bit more for a membership, to try and recognize, like, why getting 1,000 people to sign up would be a realistic number?
So I think a good example would be maybe a family or an individual or a mother with a child that wants to have a space to work out. And they can go to the fitness center and work out during the week. But then on the weekend, they can bring their child and have this essential water park almost available to them that they could use at any time with their membership. So that is what we feel is that additional incentive and enhancement that you could get over just a regular fitness-style membership.
Got it, thank you.
I think one of the things that they haven't touched on, too, is as a parent, I spend three days, three or four days a week, sitting at my son's practice. And if there was a gym facility there, I still wouldn't use it, but it would be nice. It still would be, it would be nice that if there was one there, right? So if you're taking one of your kids to tumbling, you could go and work out while your kid's tumbling or whatever. So I think that that's the other benefit to having some of these program classes, is that if your child is in the class and they're occupied for an hour, you can go swim laps, or I know you like to shoot baskets and things of those natures, so.
Musical munchkins.
Musical munchkins, that type of stuff. To me, the thousand seems light. If I had that option, I think that that'd be a real great option as a parent, to send my kid to a class, I'll go to the gym or whatnot, and then we'll reconvene in an hour.
Hey, Donna, can I ask a question? Well, I guess I can ask a question. Page 28, or slide 28, the membership fee and the drop-in fee, it would be $405 plus $147, which is $552, right? The biggest fear that I have is that kids that don't have money show up to this community center and don't have full access. And that bothers me greatly. And so how do we solve that? And I was really encouraged, because I thought, well, it's only a half a million dollars. This isn't the big dollar amount I had in my, it's a big dollar amount, but not overwhelming. But specifically, how do we solve kids showing up and getting full access? That's the biggest, of all of this, that's what matters most.
So this is just an initial proposal. If the council provides direction to help subsidize maybe lower-income families, that's something that we can definitely explore and come back with a proposal for. But we just wanted to provide some initial estimates and numbers. Again, we still have a year, a couple of years to work through what these actual fees could be. So we are just, again, proposing what our initial.
Can you put that on the radar going forward?
I'll also make a comment. The Parks and Rec Master Plan encourages the staff to, and sets a policy that we should set the fee recovery schedule at a certain rate, and then provide subsidies or other ways to sponsor those people to ensure that the cost recovery happens. Now, this is obviously within the council's purview, and you can change that cost recovery however you'd like. But as we modeled the revenues and the cost for the facility, we adopted that approach, which is to say, what's the price, what's the cost recovery? And then come back and generate these revenue calculations. So if the council wants to change that, that's totally within their purview. And, you know, providing a sliding scale is one option. We have community partners who'd like to be able to sponsor some of these people as well. So there are a variety of ways to get there. And like Donna said, we have quite a bit of time to figure that out.
And I'm with you. I just, I really want this park to be generational change. I want kids to go and have a place where they can thrive. And maybe they get to their college career and said, it was because of City Park I had a place and an environment to learn and progress. So that really needs to be an underlying principle, or policy, or whatever you want to make it. But that's very, very important.
Mayor, I would like to actually add to that. So the day use for youth is $4, right? And that could even be cost prohibitive to some people. I think the bigger challenge is a kid showing up and not knowing anything about subsidies or income scales or anything along those lines, and then being denied access at that point, right? And so for me, I would like to, I would like to kind of develop a process or a plan that says, okay, young feller, come on in, and then, yeah. Or whatever the kids say these days. But, you know, hey, come on in today, and, you know, here's a day use pass, and please take this home and fill it out. Or some sort of process so that we're not doing this a whole bunch of times and potentially embarrassing kids, and then they just stop coming, or something along those lines. So they may not know about the fee, they may not know a whole lot about it. They just see, hey, there's this new community park, I want to go check it out, and that type of stuff. And so I would like for that process to be very clear and very smooth, so that when they do show up and they don't know, hey, I don't have four bucks on me today, or whatever it works out to be, that A, they get access and that we're able to help move them along, so that they can continue to have access.
Totally agree.
I remember us having a conversation, sorry, a couple of years back, when we were talking about fee recovery for programming. And I wasn't necessarily satisfied then, and I don't, I can't say that I'm satisfied now, about how it is that we approach letting lower-income families know that resources are available to them. We say that we have them, but we don't necessarily advertise that we have them, or advertise in a way that, you know, allows them to be consumed. And there's this fear of like, if it's too widely advertised, then, you know, we run out of the resources. But that's what they're for. So I agree with my colleagues that we need to have a system, a plan ahead for, you know, to accommodate and to allow for low-income access. And not just to allow for it, but to like promote it, especially for the communities surrounding the park. They should know that this is their park and that, like, cost is not a barrier.
And we can work on a plan for that. Okay, so just starting to wrap it up, our revenues I'm carrying over here into the top block here, the $2.3 million. And then for expenditures, we are estimating about $3.3 million, just close to $3.4 million for personnel, supplies, operations, and maintenance for the facility, park, splash pad, and pool. So when you combine those two, that gives us a total estimated subsidy for City Park at $996,227, which is 29% of the current operating, or the operating budget that's proposed for that site. Just to recap on the numbers for the CCC, we had a fiscal year 24 subsidy of $869,513, which was 52% of that operating budget. So the difference between those two amounts is $126,714. As we mentioned, we are going to continue to pursue additional revenue generation opportunities for City Park as we move to get it up and running. We mentioned grant opportunities and partnerships. For grants, we'll be looking at First Five, which provides grants to be able to offer Learn to Swim programs for children five and under for free. The Inland Regional Center also offers grant opportunities for adaptive programs, and we will pursue those. We mentioned the Silver Sneakers Healthcare Provider Partnership. And we'll also be looking at sponsorship opportunities for both corporate sponsors through our local businesses and nonprofits, as well as private sponsorships and donations. So in summary, we believe that the CCC's challenges will be City Park's opportunities. The site will be built for recreation with abundant amenities. Acoustics will be suitable for multi-program use. There'll be increased opportunities for diverse programs and multi-generational use, more opportunities for passive recreation use. And this would be combined with a park, park area with added green space and outdoor environment suitable for a community center, plenty of parking availability, proximity to the historic downtown and local neighborhoods, and room for future growth. So again, our ask is that the city council provide feedback on the proposed operations plan for City Park, and I'd be happy to answer any additional questions.
I think that's all we've been doing, is providing feedback. Tony, you got anything?
Yeah, I have two questions. One, I wanted to mention, I think we did, but the adaptive and senior programs that are at 98%, capacity, most of those are free or low income, or low cost, which is why they're at a 98% capacity. So the other locations that we currently utilize that are on a very small percentage, like Victoria Park, I think you said, it's about 1%, and they do tai chi and dancing. I can't pronounce that word either. Facilities that have a very minimal use like that, are those programs going to move to the potential new park? So if they move to the new park, what do we do with that facility?
Yes, so we are proposing to move those programs to City Park. We are exploring opportunities to repurpose Victoria Park specifically and potentially make it available to other entities. So that's something that we're working on right now.
So any facilities, because the other one was off a border. I can't remember the name of it, but it was off a border.
The Brentwood, yeah, Brentwood.
Brentwood, yeah. Is that another facility that we would be shutting down, that program at that facility and moving?
No, that one is primarily an early childhood preschool-type program. That's been operating there for years, it's very successful, so we would keep that one there.
Okay. All right, those are the questions that I had, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate. This is something I know I asked for, and man, there's a lot of, there's a lot of hope in here. And I see the data, I see hope. I'm not going to finish the statement I think I gave the city manager, because it's not polite. But I want it to be successful. I want to see us meet these things, but I am very, very nervous about it. Because I, you know, I don't see the CCC as a dangerous place or a bad place or not a place where people, you know, want to go. We have a lot of perceptions to fix. And we are betting $250 million over the next 30 years. Thanks.
I'm very hopeful. I think this is going to be great. I am very hopeful. And I think that there's two things, so I think there's two things that are going to balance each other out. And I really would love for us to take some, some notes from the private sector when it comes to our rental facilities. I think our rental facilities can be the thing, especially that 400-person capacity room, can be the thing that helps us really offset and create a, a good balanced program that includes access for low-income families. So aside from, you know, the membership, the, how we promote it and all, I, I think the rentals, there's, I can't tell you how many organizations will reach out and say like, you know, I need a conference room, we need access to a conference room, or we need event space, what's going on? And we don't necessarily have that amenity available in the community. So I really want to see us, you know, rent out as much as possible that 400-person rental space and those conference rooms and make them just an easy, an easy process to get to and really help those offset the rest of it. But thank you for putting together this plan.
So we're going to have an opportunity to give our final thoughts after we look at the, the displays, right? Or is all that?
Correct, yes, this is the first presentation.
Then, then I'll just make, I have one question now, and that, that relates to the YMCA. So I know that they currently are running the program at Auburn Dale. So if we are going to manage our aquatic center, what happens with that program? Are we going to have two different programs going on?
The plan is to still keep Auburn Dale available for the YMCA to operate their programs out of.
Okay. I'd like to learn more about the potential partnerships that we could have with the Y and maybe it's just a partial partnership. I don't, I don't really know what that would look like. I'd like to know if we could do it better, if we could do it cheaper or both or neither. And if neither is the answer, then maybe we do look at something that's more efficient and cheaper for our citizens perhaps. But right now, I don't know, and I would like to know. I don't know if my colleagues feel the same way, but I just think there might be space for them somehow, some way. Until I learn more, you know, I can't really say much more. Yeah, it's all for now.
Yeah, I feel like I got Wes on this shoulder and Jackie on this one. Happens quite a bit. But I'm all in, I'm all for it. It's great, wonderful. Cut myself off. Oh yeah, we got to do public comments. Sylvia, are there any public comments?
Mayor, yes, I have five speaker cards for this item.
All right, glad we didn't skip those people. Let's, we'll start off with Audrey, followed by Marta, followed by David, sure Joe will work his way in there, followed by Bobby.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor, members of city council. Funny you should ask about the YMCA. I am Audrey Eschno, President and CEO of the Corona Norco Family YMCA. So I'm going to refer to my notes because I'm so passionate about this topic and I don't want to dive in too deeply in the weeds and go on on tangents. So please forgive me if I refer to them, but they are my notes. So first of all, I want to let everybody know, we share in the excitement of the developments at this park. We're so excited and we know it's going to bring such goodwill to our community. Also, we understand that many cities build beautiful community centers and they run them really well. And we know that many cities are moving toward a membership model. And I'm sure many of them are going to be very successful too. I'm not here to say that the YMCA wants to operate the community center at City Park. I'm not saying that. But everything you are talking about is what a Y does. This is what we do, we have all of this in place, we, we do all of this already. So I am here to share a little bit about our work as a Y and to let you know that if the community residents and the city council are interested in exploring a partnership with the YMCA, we would love it, we would love to have that conversation. We do feel that we could be a tremendous benefit in this space. We are not a gym and swim, we're not a rental facility, we're a community partner, we're here for everybody, we do not turn anyone away due to inability to pay. We have structures in place, we have contributors and funders. There are 2,700 YMCA's across the country, meeting the needs of individual communities through partnerships and shared resources. Many YMCA's have direct partnerships with their cities in providing services to their communities. These partnerships all look different depending on the unique needs of each community. This is what YMCA's do. I can tell you that our YMCA here in our community has a long history of showing up here and working to meet the needs of local families. Historically, we have predominantly provided services mostly in the childcare space. But recently, as you all know, we developed a wonderful partnership in aquatics with the city and has provided over 4,000 swim sessions in almost two years. No one has been turned away due to inability to pay. In essence, we are preventing drowning for children and adults in our community. Many of you know also that we're continuing to invest in healthy living programs. We've hired membership staff, health and wellness staff, groups exercise, fitness staff, we don't have a contract structure. These are long-term staff that are in place and trained, meeting the Y way. As you know, the Y is a worldwide organization with tremendous resources and experiences. We have experience in operating full facilities, including health and wellness spaces, outdoor spaces, aquatic centers, fitness classes, sports programs and more. And we are here to do what the community calls us to do. Three minutes.
A bit taller than me. Good afternoon, city council. I'm here, I'm, I'm here because I have two concerns. The first is the membership-based gym and pool. So we're going to build a gym and a pool in the center of a district, well, not the center, on the side mostly, but you know what I mean, of a district that is low-income and charge a membership fee. That makes no sense to me. Just this is a side note, talking about the YMCA. We have scholar, well, as you guys all might know or not, I'm on the board of the YMCA, so just want to put that out there. So I'm familiar with what the Y does. But the YMCA has scholarship and financial aid for those who can't afford memberships. They don't turn anyone away. But what I see here is an issue with the city membership for the City Park. The families and people who most need that access will have none. This is the opposite of inclusivity. And it gives me past city pool history vibes. It's not a good legacy for the city council, to be honest, if we're going to have a membership-based pool. So on the second note, I'm a bit confused as to why the city hasn't partnered with the YMCA on the community center. If the main goal is to serve the community, this is the Y's wheelhouse. And just to note, again, I'm on the board of the Y, so I'm familiar. The, the Y recently has been building on childcare by expanding to sports, health and wellness programs. The Y has been very successful with the swim program. Most of the programs we offer fill up and end up having a waiting list. So we don't have that marketing issue. We get the information out there and, and our people sign up for the programs. Our board is a 100% donating and fundraising board so that we may offer financial aid to all the children and people who cannot afford our programs. And the Y already does most of the things the council has brought up, like the staffing, financial and other issues. It's here to serve the community for the benefit of the community. It appears that the city wants to build the YMCA without the YMCA experience, resources and program. If anyone here would like more information about the YMCA, if you're not familiar with this, I'm here, Audrey's here and I think I saw Roy here, Roy, our board chair. So please reach out, thank you.
The council, city manager, I actually wasn't prepared to speak today, but just hearing some of the stuff that's going on, I'm, I'm very concerned, like some of, some of you up here are. You know, it seems like the city is opening up, has a business plan, like they're trying to operate, to run a business. That's not what we're here for. We're here to serve our community. This membership fee, we, the City Park right now is 100% free. The community, if we are going to talk business, the, the radius of the City Park, I'm sure that most of them are under, underprivileged kids and families. So now we are excluding the people that live by the park. The park that I'm going to visit is going to be the park that's nearest to my house. That's just, that's just common nature. That's what we're going to do. Seems like we're going to be building a park for part of the community and then the others for other districts that can afford to pay. It is a scary situation when we're excluding the people around that park. It's, wow, I didn't realize if this, this, this program was going to go this way. It, it really does concern me that, that the kids and the families that can't afford it, they can look out their window and they can't go to that park. That's, that's sad. You know, secondly, I don't even know what else to say. I guess I'm just here to, to speak for the, for the, for those that can't speak for themselves. I grew up as a poor kid, single-family household, and going to the park was what saved me from getting into trouble. And the kids around the City Park need a free park, not something that they only have partial access to. The Y has talked about having, having the experience. The city is about to hire or wants to hire a full staff of lifecards and, and, and all these people bringing the costs up of labor and, and now we're trying to recoup those costs. To me, it doesn't make sense that we're trying to conduct a business when we should be conducting a, a giving back to our community and those around that park. Anyway, I'm, I'm, I'm hoping that, that, that this gets revisited and that we have a component where we can, we can have full access to these kids, to the kids have access to this park. I understand the classes, the senior citizen, I'm not talking about that. The banquet, I get it. That shouldn't be free and neither through these classes. But everything else, the aquatics pool, we need a community pool. Saturday and Sunday should be free to the community. Just a little brief history, back in the day, we used to have a par, a park here in town, the pool, where the Mexicans and the Hispanic kids could not go in, only once a week, the plunge. I think we're about to repeat that again, because Mexicans and Hispanics around that community will not be able to go to that pool.
Spiegel with the Corona Chamber of Commerce. First of all, I want to just applaud the staff for putting something together. I think it's awesome. I'm kind of leery because the, my board, and I'm going to do a little bit of a difference in some areas with them, but that's what I guess makes us unique and, and a powerful chamber. I think it's great planning, I think some good vision. I'm sure there's going to be some adjustments. Jackie, yes, boy, that event center, it, we get calls every single day for people that would like to have 250, 300, 400, and there is room for that to happen. I am concerned, I have not really looked into the plans of a kitchen and the prep work and all the stuff that would go along with that, because if you're going to have something like that, again, I have not looked, I haven't spent the time on that. I also want to just touch on the YMCA, they've been a tremendous partner in this community for years, and I've got questions on stats and I'll, I'll go through those. But I think history is great with Corona and we have a, you know, being the lemon capital of the world years ago, we constantly will take the lemons and make lemonade out of them. So I just want to, if I could ask specific to some of the slides, like slide number, well, slide number six, I think it is, it says senior center is 3%, but yet on page 13, it shows that there is like 63,000 seniors that are going to be utilizing, and I don't understand the numbers on that. I'm not looking for an answer right now because I don't have the time I can see on there. Also on slide number nine, 98% on that one with the program participation shows 21,000 seniors, yet I go back to that same thing, about 3%. So I'd like to meet with you guys and figure that out later on. The room's availability on slide 10 and not designated for recreation, we, we need to talk on that. And then when, when you're selling, I, I believe you proposed to sell the Circle City Center for X amount of dollars, is that parking facility, the parking agreement going to transfer to the new sales? Because when it was first built for Fender Museum, it was a partnership that they would only use in the evening and on weekends so that the other community, the other building part over there would be able to share that parking. So I've got questions on that. And then real quick, before I get dinged, there was a question regarding the revenues and how to deal with the underprivileged. I would ask you to outreach to Mrs. Sherman, Mary Ann Sherman, you remember her from a, as a teacher. She does an amazing job when she was working with kids that were underprivileged. They never knew they were underprivileged. She had a way to connect with them and I think communication and working with those less fortunate and let them realize that they're getting something, but it's not like a handout, it's a hand up. And I think she would be an ideal. I apologize for going over, thank you.
I want to thank Mr. Bram Billa for, for bringing up what's actually going on here. So I grew up at that park, I grew up at the YMCA and swimming lessons, hanging out at the park, preschool at the park. And it was never a thing where, you know, you couldn't get in. I mean, I think I said at the first meeting when, when the term was, campus was thrown around and I said, I work at a campus, the public's not welcome at a campus. Lo and behold, at the final design and the operations, that's exactly what we're talking about, is a campus, a campus where the public isn't involved. And, and then throw out these just ridiculous comparisons to Morgan Hill, Mission Viejo, where our income is significantly below that and the three census tracts right around there are a small fraction of that. So if you take the three right around there, the average, so the median household income is 78, 99 and 51,000 per year? Where you take Mission Viejo, 136, 120 for Brea, 152 for Morgan Hill? You ought to be ashamed of yourself. I mean, seriously, this is pretty disgusting. You're taking away a neighborhood park and you're replacing it with basically a South Corona Park that happens to be in North Corona. Put this at Santana, put this at Citrus Park. If you want to do something like this, put it up, put it up somewhere else. You're taking away a neighborhood park, you're taking away neighborhood access, you're doing exactly what Mr. Bram Billa said, you're going back to the whole exclusionary thing. You're taking away a neighborhood park. Okay, it's, and you'll talk about it later, you're talking about it later, it's programmed out, the passive spaces, the picnic benches, the thousands of people that use that park currently, right now, are not going to be able to use it anymore. I guess they can go sit in the middle of the community canvas, but they can't play soccer there. All that's going to be gone, they can't have a birthday party there, I guess unless they want to rent a room, you know? And, and you could say, well, hey, our, our programs aren't well-marketed. That's, that's just bullshit. It's like, you know, the Italian restaurant, you don't have to have a big sign for people to go to the Italian restaurant because they know it's great. You don't need a, you don't need an 800 square foot sign on the 15 freeway because everybody knows it's great and everybody's going to be there. That's the situation with the YMCA. Their programs are full. And to, to hear the assistant city manager and staff straight arm the Parks Commission the other day and, and refer derisively to subsidies and, and kind of push off, well, we're not building it for the YMCA, we're building it for our community. Like, those are different things. It was disgusting, frankly, I mean, it was disgusting. You know, the, the, just the rude, just derisive dismissiveness the other day about that. Well, you don't like my numbers, well, these are my numbers. We did the numbers, we did what I was charged to do. It's disgusting. You ought to do better.
Mayor, can I, can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I appreciate everyone's comments and I, and, and they hit home. They hit home as someone who grew up using this park as a Latina, as first generation and growing up in a humble home and going to this swimming pool when it was $2 per person. And so here's what, here's, here's the rub though. And so here's what, here's, here's the rub though. The trajectory of that discussion is we, it's too expensive and therefore it should not be built, or it should be built somewhere else. Doesn't, doesn't the community deserve a nice park? Doesn't the downtown deserve a nice aquatics? Doesn't this community deserve a state-of-the-art, amazing facility like this? I think it does. I think it does. And I don't think it belongs in South Corona. I think it belongs right in the center of town. Now, if the problem is cost, we can find a solution for that. But what I don't stand for is this idea that this park needs to pencil out in order for it to happen? And then if it doesn't pencil out, then it doesn't get done. Like, think of the paradox there, guys. We're trying to say this community deserves better and deserves free access, but yet if it doesn't pencil out, we can't build it. Come on. Come on. So if the problem is cost, we can find a solution for that. Just like the Y does, does grants, the city can do grants too. And I'm not saying that partnerships are out of the, out of the question. We can find and make partnerships work. But I'm not here for the discussion of, well, it doesn't make dollars and cents and, and this is all baloney, it doesn't make dollars and cents, and these kids aren't going to get used for it. Because those are two separate discussions. If they're, if, if we're talking about access and we're talking about affordability, we can find a solution for that. But this community deserves a park like that. And we shouldn't be watering it down because it doesn't pencil out and simultaneously say that we're leaving out the community. That just doesn't, those two things just don't, they don't align. That's it, Mayor.
Mayor, can I, can I add in? I don't have the history with this park as a lot of you guys do, and I'm not as, I'm not as emotionally invested in it. But one of the things that I was looking at as I was listening to the comments was, you're taking away a neighborhood park and, yes, this park is in a neighborhood, but I don't know I would consider this a neighborhood park. I would consider this the city's park. That's kind of why it's named City Park. And on a one-to-one basis, I don't think that the, that the neighborhood right around there is losing any amenities. I think that they're, they may be losing some space because we're building some newer amenities, but a single day use pass is $4. And if, when that pool was active, when Mr. Bram Billa was a, was a child, it was $2? It's not bad considering inflation. And I think one of the things that I heard up here was all of us trying to figure out a way so that people that don't have the income that they think is necessary to have access to that, have a way to have access to that. So I wanted to just acknowledge everyone's comments and say, I hear you. I don't want to exclude anybody either. And I want to make sure that people that have a lower income, that may live in that neighborhood, have access to this. And we're two years away from opening the doors. Hopefully, knock on wood, maybe a little bit faster. So I think that we have some time with that and, and I really appreciate staff putting together this operational plan, which is what we all asked for. Is it perfect? No. Can it get better? Yeah. Will it get better? Absolutely. That's what this feedback is for. So I, I don't think that on a one-to-one basis, that community is going to lose any amenities. They may lose some space, but if they're using that, that park right now for fitness, they're running and maybe doing pushups and pullups or situps or something, they could still do that for free with a bunch of other really cool new amenities. So I'm, I'm really excited about what this park is going to offer, not just the community that's right around there, but the community as a whole. So, and I, I agree wholeheartedly with Councilmember Casillas about, I wish that we could build 40 of these in our community and have just the best parks in the entire world, but we can't. And so we are taking advantage of rebuilding a historic park in our community that's going to serve not only the neighborhood, but the entire community. So I'm, I'm excited about this as well. So, thank you.
Thanks, Tony. I truly believe that five of us are united and when it comes to setting policy, to getting this right, and I believe we will get it right, and I'll leave it at that. Up next, number two, City Park Revitalization Project Final Design. We're going to head on over to Moses.
Good afternoon, Council. Thank you for the opportunity here. I will get through this presentation so I can get, let the Rios team get up there and have fun with all these models up there. So I will just quickly get through this lead-in. So this is the City Park Revitalization Final Design Presentation. And the ask today is that the City Council provide feedback on the City Park Final Design Concept that we have here in front of you, and we're going to dive into that in just a moment with the Rios team. This is part of the city's strategic plan, so aligns with our vision, our purpose and the objective to have a purposely built community center that's a full-service campus that includes several new amenities. Process to date, we did go to Parks Commission, so we've had a busy couple months here, went to Parks Commission, we did some pop-ups, we did a pop-up event at the park in February. We also went to study session. We took all of that feedback, developed some final concepts and further refined the design. We went to Parks Commission last week and we are here today to show Council those renderings. We did do some online, some surveys and we were actually, it was really successful, we got four, almost 500 results in just a matter of 12 days. That was through in-person at the pop-up event. We also had the displays on, display at the Circle City Center and were able to do some surveys there, and a majority of them were done online. Some of that information that came back was that they wanted a community campus, they wanted walking centers, botanical gardens, all-wheeled plaza, and some areas to hold sports. Homeless was one of the items that came up. So just a lot of different things that came back. We took all that information again and were able to, to put it together with this model escape before you. We did have those three initial mockups. We had the Crown, the Flowering Fields, and the Wonder Loop. So with those, we all had some likes and dislikes that came with those. Again, I wasn't going to get into the details of it, just so we can kind of be, get to this, this is the fun part. Upcoming activities, we had the study, study session today. We will then be going to construction documents, working on SEQA this, early this summer. Fall, we will be going to Planning Commission and hopefully getting ready to bid out the project. And if everything goes accordingly, first of the year, be ready to award a contract to begin construction. We have the Rios team over here to the right of us, or I guess your left, and they'll be getting ready to jump into here and kind of get into the weeds of it. Again, the ask is that after we present this, these options to you and go through everything, that you provide us some additional comments and feedback. And after that, we'll be available for any questions or comments. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to the Rios team. Thank you, guys.
By saying thank you very much to the Council and to the amazing staff and the community for allowing us to be part of this project. I think we're all very excited and very committed to it, and we love being a part of helping it. I want to talk about two things really quickly and then my team's going to take over and sort of present the project. The first thing, and really the most important thing, is I think we all really appreciate your conversation today about equity and inclusion and about everybody is welcome at this place. And there is a direct architectural and garden translation to all of your discussion, and that's about creating an experience, a building, a garden, a place that is inclusive and open and optimistic. And I think the core value of what we're about as designers is making those kinds of places. So our building is not pretentious. Our building is not closed. Our building is open. The building and the gardens are about welcoming everyone in a really joyous way. This design is about curiosity. It's about openness. It's about trying to inspire every single person that comes here. And so I just want to reinforce that as you're worrying about how actually everyone gets access to it, we're worrying about how all the things we design facilitate that and stand for that, and I think we're accomplishing it. And second, the process we've gone through, you've been a part of, you've seen these options, and we've heard lots of comments from all of you. And I think the success of this project, and hopefully the success of what we do, is we really listen deeply and we listen to the literal comments you make, but also we listen to the implied, intended things that you're saying. And that we take all of those things and we bring them together, we translate them, but we translate them in a way that still is a whole singular beautiful place and thing. And there's a lot of danger in sort of projects that are public because if you try to take every single comment, you know, exactly literally, you end up with something that's kind of weird and strange. And it's our job, and I think we do it really well, is to listen to everything and bring it together, but still come up with something that represents singular ideas and aspirations that everybody can be proud of as a final place, but also see that their comments made it better. So that, and let my team go through it.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, City Council and staff and community for your comments. I'm going to try and get through these first ones real quick. We got our agenda, our recap. We're going to go through the different spaces of the park, we're going to talk about each one individually. And also, I, I think I want to ask at the start, I think how we're going to facilitate when we bring everybody down to look at the model and flip the boards around, is we're going to kind of follow the same agenda to talk about area by area instead of it being a free-for-all to see if it's a little more efficient that way. Where we started, Moses talked about it perfectly earlier. We had, you know, our Crown, our Flowering Fields, and our Wonder Loop. I think the three big ideas, we were trying to hearken on Grand Boulevard with the Corona Crown, Flowering Fields about the agricultural history, and the Wonder Loop really dove into the different plant biomes around Southern California and around Corona. And as Mark and everybody else is going to say, following me, we want to be collaborators in this, right? So here's kind of some simplistic diagrams talking about the Crown, the Fields, and the Wonder Loop, and how we tried to integrate all of those things together. We have the really strong moment of, of the loop in front of the community center. I think one of the really positive aspects of the Flowering Field building from our presentation a couple months ago was we really liked this interface between what, what was going on inside the building and how we made available complementary programs on the outside of the building. And the Wonder Loop, a walking trail, everybody's, everybody's favorite piece of this exterior program, so we absolutely have that included in here as well. And I think Mark hit on this, nail on the head, heart of the community, a place for everybody, is, is open and available and really enhancing the space that they have out there now. So here's our plan, and we got a little sneak peek of it before we started today. You can see the community center framed by the community canvas just to the south of it. And as you move away from the building, the activity gets a little more intense. We have the, you know, the play area to the northwest. We've got kind of a botanic garden, walking paths interfacing with the Sixth Street front, surrounding the community living room that we're calling it on the west side of the community canvas, and then the high activity sports courts and pump track to the western most side of the project here. I want to go through these real quick to our program diagrams. We've got this, we can, you know, we have, we have it broken down and simplified a little bit on one of the boards that we can dive into and talk about, kind of the same note that I was just speaking of. We have our walking loops. We actually penciled these out, so we have a quarter-mile loop in front of the, in front of the community center. We've got what we're calling a Wonder Loop, our Infinity Loop, where if you make one, one circuit of that, you're at a half-mile. And then we've got our longer one-mile loop, all three of them interfacing with the community center and trying to get as much of the park in as you, as you, you know, walk around the site. These are pedestrian, are pedestrian circulation diagram. Larger areas have wider lines here, and then you've got the spaces between to kind of navigate between the different programs, the different spaces on each one of these. Vehicular access, parking was a big concern, making sure we're, we're getting that. I think we're at 319 parking spots currently on the site, and that's not counting periphery spots. And I know there's another smaller lot across the street that's been talked about being available. We have a couple bus stops, and then we've also got our onsite vehicular circulation that we're wanting. I love hearing y'all talk about the food trucks and making those more kind of plug-and-play, ready to go, but also fire access, maintenance access, things like that across the site. So the next series are a few diagrams that we put together to give you the scale of this large space that we've got here. So this is a large picnic event, right? We're, we're occupying all that community canvas. We've got vendor tents, we've got space for 18 food trucks around the perimeter of this space. Movie night set up, we have a stage area that's flat and ready for like a plug-and-play music event or movie event like we have here. This is showing about 2,000 people on, you know, more spread out on picnic blankets and things like that. Concert, a little, little more packed in there. We're getting about 4,300 people on the community canvas, and this isn't even talking about the surrounding hardscape area, being able to sit in that community living room and looking back at the stage. Our market row anchored by the ficus tree to the southwest side of the site, showing opportunity for a, you know, medium-sized farmer's market event with tents and food trucks, and then bringing it all around the community canvas for a larger farmer's market event. And then street fairs, there's been some interest and some, some harkening back to this being kind of the, the start and finish of parades. And when the Armory used to supplement that activity, and so we can do the same thing here, shut it down, have a, have a whole street event along Sixth Street on the southern edge of the site.
Thank you, Brett. I'm Jason Shinoda, I'm a design director here at Rios. I do want to start with three points just on the overall site plan, and starting with number one, you know, we've worked, worked really, really hard to make sure that all of the circulation and all the spaces that we're designing are incredibly porous, and so keeping an open, as open an edge to the park as possible and addressing all of the corners of the park is super important and making sure that people feel safe there and making sure that they can feel like they know where to go, know where to enter, and they can see across the park and make sure that we can maintain visibility of all the great activities that we're providing. Number two, the circulation and every, and all the programs are working really hard around the existing trees. So you'll see on the, on the model, on the plans, all of our existing trees are represented there that we're keeping, which is, you know, as many as we can, especially on the west side of the park where the most intense amount of mature trees is located. And we're taking advantage of that from a shade point of view as well. And then number three, you'll see in the plans as we go through, that we're really trying to activate as many corners of the park with new programs and offerings. And so building upon what the current park, you know, provides for the community and for the public, making sure that we're really activating and using as much of the space as we possibly can. So we're going to start with the civic heart, which is the Crown, the central space, what Donna and team have been calling the community canvas, surrounded by the Market Plaza. This really is the heart of the park, the heart of the community, a place for everybody to gather around that central space and accommodate all of those events that Brett and the team have talked about, the concerts, the markets, food truck nights, picnic nights. We have our interactive splash pad here, sports practice can happen on the main lawn and many other activities. So looking at the, some of the design features of how we've envisioned this central Crown space, this is that Market Plaza, which we're envisioning as a, as that quarter-mile loop. It's about, at the widest, it's about 50 feet wide, so you get a sense of the scale of, you know, there's plenty of space for all of the food trucks to pull up, market tents, that kind of thing. And then here, we, here we're showing the, the splash pad, which is actually, we're envisioning as a unique feature, which is linear. So it's a little bit different than maybe the kind of splash pad that you're used to seeing. And that linear element is really framing the whole central space, allowing people to play in it. You can turn it off as well if needed for larger events, but the idea there is that you have the kind of frame of the park is really about this interactive splash pad and all of the seating elements on the, on the outside of that ring that you can see as well. We're ringing that central promenade space with two rows of the Canarian Island date palms, which are being, were proposed to relocate from the building, the area where the building is right now. Date palm palms are fairly simple to relocate, so we're using those to frame the space along with some globe lighting. those to frame the space along with some globe lighting and as well, the kind of event lighting that we would need for events along the lawn. You can see here in the aerial view how the, how the, all those kind of layers start to build up, terracing down into the lawn space with, with social eddies or kind of nooks and crannies that we're designing into all of the hardscape spaces for smaller gathering spaces for families and friends. And of course, for watching all of the activities around that central canvas. Just outside of that main promenade space is what we're calling the community living room. So this is an area that overlooks all of the activity on the promenade and the central lawn space. And we're calling that community living room, we're really providing a lot of different types of occupation. So lots of seat walls, benches, furnishings, even play equipment for all ages, like seesaws, communal long picnic tables and ringing the back end of that with built in seating furnishings that again have these kind of nooks and crannies for different social gathering of different scales. It's raised slightly above the promenade space to accommodate the levels that drop down from the southwest corner to the northeast corner of the park. And so you do have a sense of being perched slightly above that main promenade space. Here's a view from one of those living room kind of bench spaces, looking straight out into the central lawn space. And you get a sense of all of the kind of, the existing tree canopy that we're, that we're taking advantage of. And there will be additional trees as well. And from here in this aerial, you can also see those layers of how all the activities build up around the central lawn space. Moving on to the botanical garden and the Sixth Street edge. So this is the more passive area of the park along Sixth Street. We're envisioning this as more of the botanical garden with all the walking trails that we've been talking about, as well as an entry plaza around the signature ficus tree on the southwest corner of the site. So there's a kind of marker at that point as a main entrance that brings you up into the promenade around, into the crown space. We're proposing another restroom facility there. So there's, we're bouncing out the restroom provision across the park. There's one here and then there's another restroom that's accessible from the public on the building side. And along Sixth Street itself, we've widened that sidewalk space so that beyond the existing sidewalks, there's a zone of decomposed gravel, which is accessible that you can walk and promenade along, but also be able to accommodate an additional space for markets and fairs. And then mixed into those wandering spaces between the botanic gardens are more seating spaces and also locations for some of the historic markers and monuments that we're going to be relocating into the park. And the planting palette, this goes for the, you know, the approach to the whole site. We're really going to be focusing on drought tolerant native California planting as much as we can. Low maintenance. We'll be working really closely with the maintenance and operations side of the city staff to make sure that this is a very easily maintained park, but also considering ample seasonal change and making sure that there's, you know, flowering in different types of seasons throughout the year so that there's always interest in some of the different spaces in the botanic garden. Moving on to this, one of the big signature elements of the park, which is the playgrounds. We have two playground spaces. The one on the inner side is the two to five toddler play. And then that gives way to the bigger one outside, which is the five to 12. If we zoom in here, you can see those two. The red zones are the, are proposed to be the resilient surfacing surrounded by lawn spaces, also surrounding those with ample places to sit for parents and friends and, and enclosing all that. And you can see all of the, the kind of meandering connective paths that are connecting all those spaces to the main promenade. The two to five playground, we're envisioning as a pollinator inspired playground. We were loving the idea that we could draw on some of the agricultural heritage and history of Corona, starting with the birds and the bees pollinating the flowers and then those become the lemons and the orange groves, or the, sorry, the lemon groves as you get older. So the little kids get the birds and the bees and the, and the flowers. And this includes all your kind of typical, typical balancing, spinners and small swings and all that kind of stuff, small swings. And then what we're envisioning as the big kid play, big feature elements inspired by lemon trees with swings and slides and all of this on resilient surfacing. There's multiple areas for larger, you know, climbing equipment with different, you know, also areas for, for big swings and slides. And again, lots of places for people to sit and taking advantage of the existing tree canopy for shade. We've also been just noodling around designing, coming up with some ideas that were inspired by, you know, the, all of the packing labels that we were seeing. So a lot of those elements, you know, will be continuing to develop with play specialists in the next round as we, as we move forward. Moving on to the aquatic center, the other big attraction, we have multiple offerings in the aquatic center, starting with the slide and splash play structure that's just outside the locker room. That's on the left side, the west side. So that has a shallow pool play structure and then gives way to a 200 foot long lazy river feature. There's a shade structure for parents to sit in the shade while the kids are playing on the north side and in between that and the lap pool on the, on the east side. So we have the lap pool, which currently has 10 lanes plus the two warm up lanes. And those are 20 feet, 25 meters long and a bleacher, a viewing bleacher off to the west side. Here's a view of how that is starting to look with the splash play area on the left. The, you can see the lap, sorry, the lazy river in the middle and then off in the distance, the lap pool. And then finally, the sports and fitness zone, the furthest out. So again, we, as you move outwards from the center of the park, you get older and noisier and more active. And so our fitness and sports areas are the furthest away from the younger kids towards the center. And when we zoom in there, we have our one mile fitness loop that you can run. And that passes through different zones for fitness equipment, sports courts on both the panhandle, we're on the panhandle side and on that northwest corner. So we're currently showing fitness equipment stations along those pathways in that loop. Volleyball court, ping pong, bocce, kind of your teenage game, game zone area. And then the three basketball courts on that panhandle area surrounded by a pump track. So we've been thinking about this zone as the, as a kind of low profile pump track that's, you know, more of a junior or small, small scale pump track that could be used for not only skateboards, but also bike, bikes and scooters. And incorporating that with kind of lawns, lawns just to hang out in the middle too. We're trying to keep low profile below three foot, no walls in all of this area so that you have maximum visibility from both Grand Boulevard and Cress. And there you can see how those kind of intertwine those two elements. And the visibility from, this would be looking from the, from Grand Avenue side or Grand Boulevard side.
And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Chris to talk about the building.
Hi, Council. I'll try to make this quick. We're really thrilled to present the community building to you today. So when last we saw you, we decided on you going with the Corona Crown scheme, which involved really establishing that central community canvas and wrapping the building around the perimeter of the canvas. We also liked elements from the flower, which if you remember, created these great interactions and sort of cross pollinations between patrons in the center, but also started to bring elements of a landscape into the building and so that there were these great direct access zones from inside of the building, both visual and physical, physical relating to the landscape. So I want to talk a little about the principles around how we have arrived at our design. I think first is that we really are concerned about being grounded in the history of Corona, particularly in the packing houses and some of the Spanish revival architecture in the area. And to that end, we are really interested in using terracotta as a roofing material for this project. And with all RIOZ projects, our central concern is that the building be integrated with nature and that people have a direct connection, both physically and visually with the nature that surrounds the building. And as a reminder of the scheme, the central lawn, we surround the central lawn with the program and wrap it in a skin. We have a central circulation core with a single point of, and securable point of entry and then smaller secured exit areas and visual access to landscape as a secondary area. We're bringing landscape and outdoor activity zones in between those programmatic areas so that they each have their own individual access to it and each have their own individual identity. And also, we're going to create a communal place where people of different interests and activities and age groups can come together and cross pollinate and mix with the community at large. And then, you know, bringing that building in, into concert, into relationship with the park and that central organizing force of the central lawn and having the building be a part of that gesture and shape. And so here we have our main plan. You can see up to the, up to the right, we have our central access corridor coming off of the parking up to the top right of the plan. And you can access the building from both the central lawn and from the parking area. Coming in, you can go to the banquet hall on the left, the gym and fitness areas to the right and circulate your way around to the classroom spaces at the furthest extent. Here we have our banquet hall serving 400 people. You can see we have a loading zone, back of house spaces, mechanical areas, ample bathrooms to serve intermissions and breaks and events. We also have administration space right off the central entry, allowing for check in and visibility as people are coming in and out of the space. Moving into the central zone, we have the gymnasium, which has a large basketball court, but also is striped for volleyball, pickleball, and is divisible into two smaller basketball courts running north, south there. We have a game room to the south with significant storage for equipment and other activities. We have two locker rooms, which at the moment are gender neutral, but could in certain situations be divided into, you know, male and female in a, in a sporting event situation. We have a large fitness zone with cardio machines, weightlifting machines. We have a spin room. We have a dance room that can be divided into two areas and also some more storage and mechanical areas. And then finally, we have our class and conference room center. So that topmost classroom there can be a large space for about 150 people, but can be divided into three separate classrooms that can be used individually and acoustically separated. And those are all going to be sort of a clean, more conference room type spaces. And then the classroom, just to this, the larger classroom to the south is going to be our messier, dirtier classroom where you can have crafts and activities. And then an additional classroom to the, to the left there, which is going to be more of a clean conferencing space. And then to the south there, we have bathrooms that serve both the building as well as the, the park. And I'll add that we have an additional restroom on the west side of the park that's going to serve the sports courts areas. And so in terms of the design, I want to bring you through some of the thinking and maybe bring you to some of the conclusions we've come to. And we're really looking for input from you about the way to move forward. So I think our first impulse was to take that plan, which is the same for all of the schemes, and just extrude it up and make a singular building, as you can see, that is similar to our last presentation. And we're, we're trying to create that sort of unified roof form, which envelops the park and really creates a great hug to the park. But you can see we're chopping out little bits in the back where that landscape is coming in, creating those incisions. And then in the front, we're, we're using large skylights to create, you know, through pathways through the building, visual pathways to create a sort of transparency between the parking area and the park. So the building doesn't become a wall. And so you can see that here, large glazed facade in this area. View from the side. And then here you can see the, the main entry point coming from the parking into a large glazed zone. And you can see right through the building into the palm trees beyond. So our next thought was how can we start to integrate the building into the park more? How can we bring, extend the building, the logic into, into nature? And so we looked at trying to, to bring some of those pathways, some of that running and walking pathway up into the building. So you can start to occupy a sort of higher level. And so we created a ramp that actually extends from that central community courtyard all the way up into a second level that's created. And you can have a balcony from which you can view the park, you can see events, you can have a new vista over the park as a whole. And here we have a one sort of continuous roof, right? This is much more of an enveloping gesture. And we've extended the, the perimeter area of the roof out, roof out into the park, creating gateways on both the north and south sides that sort of announce your entry into the park. Here you can see that ramp flowing up to that second level, creating an interesting view and a place to view from. And so third, we thought, you know, maybe we want to go a little bit more like the flower. So how do we individuate those individual spaces, right? So we've, we've pared the roof down so that it's specifically located at each of the spaces. And we've created a kind of shaded canopy along that ramp that extends up above the park. And so you can see here, this really accentuates that those spaces between the individual programs. And you get really clear vistas through each of the elements. And then finally, we thought of a way to sort of combine many of the best things of both worlds, you know, shrinking that ramp into the space and creating a compact version that really combines a lot of the elements of all of our thinking into a single scheme. So here you have that ramp, you have those cuts in the roof that, that provide those clear vistas through the building. And you have, you know, the ability to occupy that upper level. Here's a view from the ramp you can see here. And so finally, you know, we'd love your opinion of the schemes and, you know, your thoughts on how to move forward. And with that, I know we're short on time, but if you'd like to come down and view the model, we'd love to hear your thoughts.
Yeah. So, so, so I think we're just gonna, you know, we can, we can keep the same cadence and walk around from left to right up here. We can start on the, you know, we have the plan and some of our diagrams. And then I guess the first thing would be to talk about the crown, the promenade and the outdoor living room. So this first central space would be the first thing we'd like to hear back from you guys on.
First question for you. For this, these viewing bleachers here, for the lap pool, can we get shade over that?
Sure.
I think, you know, you're gonna have a lot of parents probably, you know, watching their kids swim. And if they're sitting on bleachers with no shade, that's miserable. So some sort of shade structure there. Well.
It'd be from over here.
Different times of year, I guess, but something, so these guys aren't baking because they will bake. So I had another question with the addition of the bocce, the volleyball and ping pong. Well, let me, let me preface this. So I liked the, the presentation of the playground. I don't know a lot about playgrounds, but it looked pretty cool for all ages. And so I'm digging that. The pump track caught me off guard a little bit because I know we initially had talked about a skate park and some of us were not that excited about it. And now it looks like we're trying to do a pump track slash skate park. So my question is, I mean, you, you alluded to it, that it's kind of a junior type of a pump track, which is fine for juniors. But if we got rid of... But if we got rid of bocce, ping pong, volleyball, that wasn't even on the survey, could we make that pump track skate park more elite? Could we make it better? Because we got a little bit more room to do something with. I don't know if that's, if we can, but it seems like we're trying to stuff 10 pounds of stuff in a five-pound bag here, in a sense. And maybe we don't need to do that. Let's make what we really want, let's make what the survey said, as nice as we can possibly be, instead of just doing some average kind of stuff that really wasn't even brought up. I don't know if we can improve the play area any better, I really liked it. But I just feel like we're not doing as much with that pump track skate park that we could do. So those are just my thoughts there.
Sure, sure. So I mean, I could jump into that, and absolutely yes, we could. I think if we, I think the more junior area would become the area over here in the sports court vicinity, right? And I still think that works, because it's close to a street. I feel like the skate park has been the most, I want to say controversial, the most divergent of opinion on it, right? And so I think what we were going for here was a solution that is highly visible. We're reducing lines of sight, hiding places, things like that, right? And still having, the skate park consultant we're working with runs into this all the time, and this was like the solution that he has used on another park that's been wildly successful before. So you have a pump track that you can include a circuit into this smaller, lower-profile skate park on the eastern side, right? And then can go off and come back around through there. So I think if that's, if that is a desire, and we want to go more skate park, I think that can absolutely be accommodated on the northwest corner.
Well, I just, this wasn't even brought up on the survey. So I think it's great if you had the space, if you had an elite skate park, a pump track, and you had the space to do extra things, I think that's great.
Sure.
But I don't feel like we necessarily have an elite pump track. And then I have one other question off the top of my head about the lazy river. Where's that? Oh wait. So you said that's like 200 feet long, I think?
200 feet long.
So it just brings up questions about liability, right? We're going to have a lifeguard over here, I'm assuming a lifeguard here. It's 200 feet, you know, on opposite side of the play pool. Is that, I mean, we're going to have to have another?
No, I think the idea is exactly like you said. You can post two lifeguard chairs on either side, one to supervise this and one to supervise this.
Okay. So I guess I would ask the same question. Is that lazy river, do you guys consider that pretty much an elite lazy river? Is it really, really badass? Or if we, you know, in the same mindset of, you know, getting rid of something we really didn't ask for, to make the lazy river even better?
Sure. What I, and that was my question too, to minimize this to our pool consultant, right? And the impression was that this is a pretty substantial lazy river, as it goes in terms of like civic pool park things, right? You kind of hit into another thing where you're, if you're comparing it to a big water park and something like that, and there's some health code and like health and safety code that kind of limit your volume and your pool coping and things like that. So to my understanding, this is a pretty top-notch lazy river attached to the...
Good, I don't know much about lazy rivers, so I'm glad to hear that. Anybody else got any questions right now?
It was nice to see the picnic tables, because I didn't see them in the design, so I appreciate that. I know we talked about that they would be used in conjunction with trees, but I don't, I mean, I know these aren't the final placements, but I'd like to see them, the shade being provided more, because I think what'll end up happening is everybody'll just gravitate toward the ones that have shade, and they'll ignore the ones that don't. And right now, you know, we do have, you know, some shade there, even though I know they're being used in other ways. And then that's one of the concerns. However, the people that live here, the people I talk to, when I go down there and I ask people, hey, where do you live? And they go, right there. And they're sitting there, and after they've, you know, got someone else to move, that's fine. I agree with Jim with the ping pong tables. I think having the ping pong tables here, and then having, where are they going to get balls, or where are they going to get bocce balls, or are they going to be going back and forth? And like I said, I think frankly, I'd rather see something else, or even an open area, you know, having a little bit of space just to kind of hang out and/or utilize some of those trees is, I think is fine. I mean, I think it actually, if you, you know, created a, you know, I know this is supposed to be the community area for everybody to kind of hang out, but, I mean, it might be an opportunity for something else.
Absolutely.
Secondly, I think the pump track, I'm very concerned, because, you know, I lived right next to Santana Skate Park, and, you know, having to go there and making sure that there weren't any needles or anything before my kid went in, I'm just worried, especially there was a couple of shots of that, where these would be great hiding places. I know that the road's right here, and it'll provide, you know, opportunity for people to kind of look and see. However, you're not going to see everything. So I'm just concerned about, I mean, and granted, I like the fact that there's basketball courts here, because it's gonna, there'll be lots of people there, and, but I just said I worry about it at night. Let's see. I did worry about some of the seating over here next to the big pine tree that drops the 10-pound pine cones.
Bony, bony tree.
Yeah, so I'm worried about, I think it's right here, right?
I think it might be one to the right.
This one? Okay. Just make sure not to put too much seating around there, people to hang out, just because, I mean, the odds are pretty low, but, yeah, council seating, I'll take that for sure. Let's see. Oh, and then the last thing, the splash pad. I'm worried about the conflicts between the splash pad and, you know, we have food trucks out. So the food truck area is right next to the splash pad, correct? So I'm worried about, basically, if I'm sitting over here in the community area and there's a truck blocking, where are my kids? And the kids are going to want to go there, and they're going to be behind the truck, and am I not going to be there? Am I going to be forced to kind of go on the other side? So I worry about that part, and it being so close, it looks like it's right adjacent to it. And then, you know, Citrus Park's down the street from my house is a great splash pad, but it's more than just water coming up out of the ground. They have, you know, lots of other structures, things that spray water, there's lots of other things. I just worry that the kids are going to get pretty bored with it just coming out of the ground. And then so if there's any other options to do that, or, and even if it isn't, you know, the entire length, I mean, I know that it's really more, it seems like it's more of an architectural feature than it would be for, you know, seeing kids actually play in it, especially with, like, this one over here. Maybe over here, there seems to be more of a, people are going to be hanging out over here because of the playground, they're going to be sitting over here. This one almost seems like it's made just to be out of the way. So I almost say we don't need this, and then curious about whether or not we could add some other features to make it more, you know, fun. I think that was it. And then this is the bathroom, right?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, that was it, thanks.
What is the depth of this splash pad, like, anticipated to be?
Negligent. Next to nothing. Six inches, probably tops. Yeah.
Yeah. Probably not even. So I was a little confused too, of how we got to, like, a skate park, and then, it's not, I don't know if it's 100% like a pump track, it's more like a, I don't know exactly what you would call it, but I was, I've been thinking about that a lot, and one of the things I thought about is, if you, there's currently a volleyball court there now, so that would be removing, it's over here, but it would be removing a volleyball court, right? But how do you, how do you put a skate park in the middle of this continuous walk loop? And that was my, that was one of my biggest concerns, is I don't want walkers anywhere near a skater. That's just strife for conflict, right? So the more and more I thought about it, the more and more I liked this kind of compromise, because, A, and correct me if I'm wrong, you could be in this circuit here and then continue back to the skate park and back and forth.
Correct.
And I realize that it's not high-level skate park, right? Like, for the guys that are jumping, you know, out of the bowls and whatnot, but I, we don't have, and I've been to the skate park a couple of times, I don't know if we have a lot of residents that are high-level skate park guys or gals, because they usually go to skate parks that are, that you like pay to go to, because they're riding ramps, they're doing that type of stuff. I think this serves a bigger part of the community. It's still a skate park, but with the addition of this, I think it serves a greater number of our community. That's just my opinion. I also don't know where the ping pong tables over here came from. I personally love the idea of a bocce court. I actually have my own bocce set, so I'm good. But I don't, I guess I just don't know how to put a top-level skate park here and keep walkers out of it. That's my concern. And I really believe that with all of the walking trails and loops, that's going to be a very active component of this park. And I liked how it was separate from the walkers, right? You might get a couple walkers over here, but for, by and large, they're separated. That's just my opinion. I could do without the ping pong, without the bocce, I don't want to remove an existing amenity, which would be the volleyball court. And the basketball courts, obviously, and the skate park being some of the major amenities. Other than that, now that I'm looking at it up close, I mean, on a one-to-one ratio, I think we've added amenities in this scale above and beyond what we currently have in that park, right? So with the addition of like the exercise equipment, you know, two different parks based on kind of age demographic that we're looking for, multiple, you know, sports courts, we still have the skate park, but with the addition of the pump track, I mean, on a one-to-one basis, I think that we've added a lot to the park. And so I'm very excited about it. Just on this side really quick, the one that I liked is the, where is it? I think it was the last one, the continuous crown. This is the one that I liked. I liked the addition of the ramp, and then not having so much of the building come in, and then having these cutouts, I thought would be, I liked that better than, than like the extended crown. So this, I liked the continuous crown. That was the one that, that kind of really, yeah.
One thing about this scheme, it does provide a really easy way to close off the ramp at like, you know, the end of the day or something, because the ramp really becomes a control piece. You don't want anybody, you know...
That was the one that I was just worried about. I could just, I mean, because I'm picturing myself as a 12-year-old kid, I'd be like, yeah, I can ride my bike on there. My... I like the idea of a truck.
Well, I also thought that that'd be kind of a nice way to get away from all of the kids, if you're like a mom or dad, you know, just, I know that I'm in the back of my truck all the time as a chair, right? Just because of whatever sports events I have to go to. And I could think that that'd be a great little place to sit, overlooking the park and not kind of be in the hustle and bustle of the little kids, who may still be riding their bike up there, but I'll just become the old guy that yells at them for riding their bike in. So anyway, I was really impressed with this. This area right here, I just don't know how you make a top-notch skate park without walkers.
There's the trees too, that we have to work around.
Yeah. And I think the goal, if that area was developed into a skate park, I think that would be even lower than what we've got over here. And if this wanted to be developed more, we could do that, and I think the smaller one would go more to the northwest corner.
Thanks. It's great that you guys brought a model, because I was having a tough time with just the visuals to really see what it looked like in scale. So thanks for the model. Great job on the aquatic center.
Great.
Great job on the aquatic center. I agree, we need more shade. It's going to be hot, and folks are going to need more shade there, but A++ on the aquatic center. On the playground, that's perfect. I can see kids loving that, the, you know, the larger play facility, but it needs more shade. It's going to get really, really hot during the summer, and these trees are great, and I prefer tree shade, it's better for our kids anyway. That being said, I don't want kids, you know, burning during the summer, and I want it to be able, I want them to be able to use it. So, please, no. We need, I'm just going to say that scarred a few people, literally and figuratively, let's not do that to our kids. We need shades. The splash pad, you know, it's interesting, because I, at first I was like, that's not really a splash pad. But then, here's the deal, this park is not meant to be like other parks. This park is meant to be iconic and different. And it's like a water feature, and I can tell you that kids almost prefer getting wet in a place where they may not be allowed to get wet, because the water's there, right? So I like that it's both a water feature, it's like blends in as a water feature, and it's a splash pad. I think it plays really well. But I do think that this placement of the trucks and, like, we got to think about what that's going to look like, because it will divide folks up, and that's going to be really strange.
Can I ask this about the trucks real quick? What if we nixed the idea of trucks lining up around here, and we just made the trucks that goes along?
I like that. What if trucks were along like the market row, instead of inside the circle?
Correct.
Yep. Yep. You put the trucks on Sixth Street or along this market row.
Or even move the, move it back. Move the water feature back.
Right. Moving of the water feature back, but actually separating the water feature from the trucks is probably a better way to go, whether they go along the Sixth Street or they go along this market row.
Great.
That's kind of gross. The walking track, I think it's cool. I think it's confusing, though, there's like this turn you got to take, and so signage is going to be really, really important for folks to know, you know, what, where do I go to stay on my one mile? So I would love to see what that looks like. The ping pong and the bocce, these guys feel very strongly about it, I will defer to their judgment, there could probably be a better use for that space. And lastly, the building, see, what I love about this design is that it's iconic. But I think we need to strike a real balance before, between iconic and like timeless. We have Main Street medians that we all want to get rid of, because they are not timeless. In fact, there are light features in this design that I think are going to run, those light features are terrible, we need to change those light features. They are, they're gonna, I mean, they might play, they're globes, they're not going to age well. And so this building, and the structure of the building, I think is really, it's beautiful, it's iconic, but I think we really need to strike this balance. And I don't know if it's there, like the terracotta, right? So I was looking through our design guidelines, our downtown design guidelines, and the terracotta is great, and that's going to be pulling into this. I don't think that this walkway is a good idea, for security reasons and for design reasons, I don't think that's going to age really well. And I don't know that I necessarily love any of the designs that were presented necessarily, but the one, I mean, if I have to pick, right? But even then, I feel like I'm kind of compromising. I prefer the buildings that do not have these like winged-out edges, because again, I don't think that's going to age very well. I love the glass, the window, I think that's going to be really great. I don't think that having a walkway is going to age well, nor will it play well, for security reasons overall. So of the designs, I prefer the ones that don't go out into...
The community crowd is the one that doesn't have the ramp? And that doesn't have the extended?
Yeah.
Correct. But correct me if I'm wrong, all of them can work without.
So they can all work without the ramp, which is great. And so maybe there's another version, right? Without the, you know, that, so I would love to see what the building looks like with maybe a few more design elements, or what this looks like with a few more design elements that incorporate, you know, our downtown, our historic stuff, that, so it's that right balance between iconic and timeless. And that's it for me.
I like the ramp. I think it's going to be a good view. I think you guys aced it. I only have one request, and it's more for Tracy. The whistle, if the whistle can be incorporated into... A whistle 15 feet up where no one can steal it. So that's it.
I have a whole list of stuff up on the diastere, but I just remembered. Okay, so one of the things in the survey that the community wanted was some sort of a shelter, some sort of a gazebo where you could barbecue, have your parties and stuff. I understand the past history we've had with the homeless utilizing those shelters regularly. But I also don't want the homeless to dictate what we do here. I mean, I know we got to design things a certain way to keep areas from hiding spots and things like that, but I would really like to see if there's some way we could have a shade structure, maybe in a way that doesn't, I don't know if it's even possible, doesn't attract homeless residents, but I just feel like that's what the community's asked for, and it's not there. Now, I did hear that there were some ideas about having areas in between, you know, a row of huge trees that could be a...
row of huge trees that could be a space where you could rent. Okay, I'm willing to keep an open mind for that, but I still would like to know if there's any opportunity to have some sort of a shade gazebo structure. So there's that. And then I did have a question on the loops here. So I know a lot of people, when they walk a loop, they want to know, okay, where does it start, where does it end? Like we had mentioned, where's, what's a mile? So show me where in the hell you would start on this one-mile loop and where you would end to have it be one mile.
Yeah, you can start wherever you want. What I would imagine, most, most people are gonna come and park in a parking lot, right? Either here or here. So if we're assuming we're gonna start here and we walk up around this way, and then what we do is we kind of piggyback off this half-mile loop. So then it comes down, it loops around, right?
Oh, you're, so you're coming through here.
You're doubling, correct. Exactly.
Didn't see that on the...
Yes.
Then I'll shut up on that.
There's gonna be things in the pavement that tell you where to go, that help you know how far you're on and that's not clear at all yet. We just haven't gotten there, but we have to have that.
All right, we're in a time crunch, so we gotta...
I just wanted to just reiterate, I forgot about the lights, thank you for mentioning that, just because I think if we would tie in some of these lights, that we have a couple of examples in town, to tie in a couple of those, I think they would be timeless, people expect them, so, and there are some in the parks still.
All right. Anybody else have, never mind. Let's go back up.
Thank you all.
Or maybe one. I guess one of my most profound disappointments at this, at this point is, I, you know, I guess, you know, I'm sure a bunch of people talk trash about the fact that I, you know, I say things, I say negative things, but I'm profoundly an optimist. And one of the things I was most optimistic about was measure in. And I really thought that it was gonna change how things were done around here. And, and I think there have been positive developments, but I really thought that a couple people would run for the north side of the city and change the, change the way business is done here. And where you wouldn't have South Corona deciding what's best for North Corona. And you would stop North Corona getting crapped on with, you know, basically being the apartment ashtray of Corona and having all the decisions made based on a South Corona frame reference. I mean, I got, you know, I got news for you. The people in South Corona think that there's nothing but dirty people down at the park. Every, every female Latina that's walking on Sixth Street is a prostitute, every male Latina, Latino that's walking down, there's a drug dealer. And it's a, and you're gonna waste $100 million. I already hear it, I hear it all the time. You're gonna waste $100 million. And, and I don't appreciate the gaslighting that we shouldn't do anything about the park. Nobody's saying that you shouldn't build anything about the park. Nobody's saying you shouldn't improve the park. But the fact that it's deliberate, and it was stated explicitly at the Parks Commission meeting, that the unprogrammed areas and the places where, you know, security might be an issue were deliberately designed out of this, that's called a park. And the fact that this is being built around the fear of six people and where their shopping carts might be is terrible. The compromises that are being made because of that are terrible. And the fact that this isn't considered by anybody to be a neighborhood park, well, you know, I mean, it's a neighborhood park, but it isn't a neighborhood park. If you ask the people down there on one of your stilted surveys whether they consider it to be a neighborhood park, they would definitely consider it to be a neighborhood park. This is a neighborhood park and this is being done without regard for the thousands of people that use it now and love this park now. Now, to say, well, we shouldn't build anything at the park, that's bullshit. You know this bullshit. You know I didn't say that. You know I didn't say we shouldn't do anything to the park, that we shouldn't build anything. But the, the, basically the South Corona mindset that we gotta clean this place up and we gotta do this and we gotta do that is just, it's really more of the same, you know? And I really wish that there was somebody up here who would stick up for the people that use and love this park now. And, and, and they shouldn't use, lose the use of it or be pushed to the corner with, you know, whatever other list of amenities that everybody wants to throw at it. Thank you very much.
Corona Chamber of Commerce, 904 East Sixth Street. Question on this slide here and that would be slide 43. When they walk around, this one here, so, when they walk around, do they end up walking through where the cars are gonna go in and out and park? No, parking's totally different. Okay, thank you. The height of the roof on these proposals, how high is the roof and is there gonna be a concern for any people to jump up on top? And we got some pretty athletic individuals.
Sure. No, we're gonna keep the roof a minimum 10 feet above the ground and then the overall height of the roof is around 40 feet.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. And then the last question is on slide 63, I believe it is, where you talked about the different rooms, where you could divide those out and you said you could have multiple different meetings going on and I apologize talking to them versus you guys, but, well, is the sound enough to where, is there gonna be a good enough break when you have one person playing music in one and someone else having a lecture in another, where there won't be the interruption?
Yes, there'll be acoustic dividers that separate the rooms.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right. Did you guys have comments? No? Okay. Special thanks to the Rios hombres for showing up. You guys aced it, we're excited, we're happy. Moses, tree warden, good job. And with that, we're...
Mayor, could I just interject? We just wanted to summarize some of the feedback that we heard, we got a few different things in there. So I'm gonna try to summarize what I think we heard and please correct me on anything if we have this wrong. So we heard, let's work on the pump track to make it better. I think I heard at least a majority say, no ping pong.
Let's, let's go back. So did everybody agree with that? I don't agree, I, I don't want to see it expand.
I just wanted to see if there was an option of making something better and having one really cool thing versus four average things. So, and if it's not possible, I'm okay with that. But, you know, by getting rid of the ping pong and the volleyball and the bocce that wasn't asked for at all in the first place, to make something else better, then I'd like it to be considered.
So, so Mayor, what would be helpful is if we can do some rapid-fire votes on a couple of things?
I'm all for getting rid of ping pong, but like bocce ball and volleyball. Jackie?
Didn't answer a question.
What was the finisher thought? What was the...
So maybe just take them in order of, pump track, better pump track?
If it's possible.
One.
I was...
Two.
No.
I was okay with the pump track the way it is.
Okay, so that's a no. The no ping pong, I think we had consensus on, no ping pong.
No ping pong.
Ping pong is out. More shade, I heard from, I think, everybody. Move the food trucks to a different location so that we don't have a conflict with there with the splash pad.
Or the splash pad, one of the two.
Separate them from the splash pad.
Yeah, keep them separated. A better lazy river?
No.
Nope. Everybody likes the lazy river? Excellent. Consider a gazebo.
Yes.
Yes?
Yeah.
All right. Everybody's on board there, thank you.
If it pencils out.
Remove, yeah, I think gazebo will probably pencil that, I don't think it's a cost problem. No bocce ball?
No bocce ball.
I like bocce ball.
I'm for bocce ball, but...
Councilmember Casillas, bocce ball?
I'm indifferent.
Indifferent, Jim?
The only reason...
He didn't ask for bocce ball.
That's a no, okay. Bocce ball...
My only reason is, is that where the hell are people gonna get bocce balls? They're not like, you know, my, my Italian friend, you know, my paisano over here, I'm half Italian, I don't have bocce balls.
So I think it's a no on the bocce ball?
If we could, I'm okay removing the bocce ball if there's a better use for that area that doesn't impede the walking truck.
Just be open. How about just being open?
And then...
That could be a better use, too.
Just be open.
I think, I think we heard to improve the lights, maybe something more historic, pull from some other examples we have.
Timeless.
Okay, timeless, I'm seeing, I'm seeing majority of nods there, thank you. And then the, the other key thing we wanted to make sure we were clear on is the ramp around the building, sort of the walkway roof ramp. So I've got a no to the ramp.
I like, I like the ramp.
Yes to the ramp.
I'm a yes.
Yes to the ramp, yes to the ramp?
I'm a strong no.
And no to the ramp?
Yeah.
So I think we're three, two, so the ramp stays then. Thank you. I, I think that's the clarity we needed. Donna, Justin, do we miss anything else?
The whistle.
Shape of the roof?
No whistle.
If you're gonna, if you're gonna do the ramp, can you, can you partner with PD and make sure that it's like as safe of a ramp as possible so that people can see what they're doing?
Of course, we would attempt to.
Criminals.
We would naturally try to make sure that it is constructed in a safe manner.
Well, I mean, safe as in like when people are on it that we can see what they're doing.
Sure.
Thanks.
The shape of the roof, did we clarify whether it's a continuous roof or whether you like the more segmented shape?
Well, I don't think any of us like the extended length.
No extended length. We got that.
But a more solid.
Any of the, do we have a proposal on which one that someone would like to move that be the selected?
I like the continuous crown, which was the last one. That was my favorite.
Okay.
Because it was, it didn't have the extensions on it and I liked the openings in the roof so that you could see through. Not, not, but it's continuous, but it's just got the openings in it, so it was the last one.
Would it help if we put the final slide back up from Rios's presentation? If you could do that, that had all four of the roof lines, the very last slide of Rios's presentation or second to last.
And so if someone could propose the one that they'd like to go with and we'll do some quick voting and we will take your direction.
Let's see.
There we go.
The one, the one that I liked was the continuous crown.
Others in favor of continuous crown?
I like the extended crown, but without the pointy things.
Okay, so...
The difference between the extended crown and the continuous crown is just the cut-in on the roof?
Yes.
I like extended crown, but cut off the pointy things.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't like the pointy things either. I didn't realize that in, like in the continuous crown, that those were skylights and I like, I like the skylights, I think that gives it a nice open look. So, yeah, I don't know.
And the difference between continuous crown and community crown?
The ramp.
Is just the ramp?
One has a ramp, one doesn't.
On the other side, and the, and the one thing we haven't, none of us have talked about is, man, there's a lot of glass and keeping this thing cool is gonna cost a fortune, so.
A lot of solar.
Yeah.
So can I, can I get a motion for...
I'll move for, I'll move that we do the extended crown without the points.
Yep. Wait a second.
Okay.
Extended crown without the wings.
But there's no skylights in the extended. I know that and I wish there was.
Well, you can pick continuous crown.
Why don't you like the continuous crown? That's exactly what you're asking.
No, I do like it. I do like it. I'm extended crown, no points.
As am I.
Hold on a second. I don't wanna rush this stuff.
No, take your time, by, by all means, look at it some more.
Mayor, Councilmember Casillas, you don't want the skylights?
No, I'm, I'm okay without them.
Me too.
Mayor?